Welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, July 18th, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please stand and join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're going to have a big crowd on tonight because there's certainly nobody going outside to do anything tonight. They're going to sit in the warm air. So, welcome to.
In the warm air conditioning? In the warm air conditioning?
My air conditioning is actually quite cold.
Might be warm, you never know. You never know. All right, at least we call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
Uh, moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second. Second by Councilmember Grau, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. Uh, moves us to five visitor presentation. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on visitor presentation, uh, not on an agenda item? Seeing none, Kevin, anybody online?
Nobody for visitor presentation.
Okay, we'll move to consent. I know one thing we don't have is, uh, previous meeting minutes, um, that they have, are not, we're not ready for tonight's meeting or for Friday relief to get it done, so we'll be doing that next week, so. With that, we move to item, uh, six, which is consent agenda item. Again, these are items that, uh, need our approval, but not necessarily conversation, but any or all can be pulled off and discussed at this point. So, with that, anyone have any, uh, discussion on anything? Not, I would entertain a motion to, uh, adopt consent, approve consent.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard to, uh, approve consent, discussion.
You know, I'll just point out one thing that Creek Road, the phase that we're doing, the engineer's estimate was seven point nine million dol- or nine point four million dollars and our bid that we got was seven point nine million, so.
Ooh.
That was very favorable. And we're actually starting to see that with a lot more projects, which could indicate that there's some slowdown in activity, uh, which would be good for some of the projects that we have coming up.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Good to hear. All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item seven, uh, seven A is adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-eight approving of variance for Clover Ridge Apartments.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item that's coming to you from the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. I'll turn it over to Liz, who's going to be making this presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start my presentation here in just a second. So as Matt mentioned, uh, we have a variance request this evening for the Clover Ridge Apartments being proposed by AB Development. Um, I like to give a, a preface in the beginning of these slides or presentation, just in terms of where they're at in the process, uh, for planning. Um, and we do have that three-step process. They have completed all three steps, uh, with the city, so going through concept, preliminary, and final. Um, they did complete that as of June of this year. Um, the site itself is located, uh, just north of the Twin Cities and Western Railroad, uh, west of Clover Ridge Drive, south of County Road fourteen, also known as Pioneer Trail. And we have Clover Ridge Development to the south there. Uh, so getting back to those approvals, uh, that were done previously, uh, they got their concept plan approved back in December of twenty twenty-one. Then in April of twenty twenty-two, they came, uh, forward with their preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning, uh, were approved at that time. Uh, then they came back for final in June, so just last month here for their final site and building plan, final plat and a variance, uh, for the building setbacks on the site. Uh, during that time, we did preface that they would have to come back for an additional variance, uh, for the usable open space, so that's, uh, the request that's in front of us this evening. Um, just, uh, refreshing on the comprehensive plan guidance and, uh, zoning for this property. Uh, the comprehensive plan, which is our twenty forty plan, guides this area to be high-density residential and open space. Uh, there's an excerpt of that shown on the screen here. Uh, the proposal is consistent with this. Um, they also did get their zoning established, uh, with their preliminary step and, uh, rezone that to a PRD eighty-four, uh, a planned residential district. So again, they're asking for a variance from specifically the zoning section fifteen point two eight point one two zero F one, uh, which is the usable open space regulation within the zoning code. Um, I also just want to give a refresher on, um, where they left off in terms of PRD development standards, uh, within PRD districts. Um, it talks about building setbacks, a lot coverage, floor-to-area ratio, um, and common open space. Um, again, they got the variance approved for the building setback in their last submittal for final, uh, so they do meet, um, or have the approvals, uh, for the, uh, building setbacks for this project. Um, and then specifically related to floor-to-area ratio, um, this one looks at the, uh, gross site area or the gross acreage of the, uh, total site in terms of meeting floor-to-area ratio, and this project does at zero point two five, where zero point five is regulated by this code. And then common open space, um, which you'll see kind of a, a difference between common open space and usable open space. Uh, the common open space again is under the PRD district standards, um, requires four hundred square feet, uh, per multifamily unit, uh, so apartments would fall into that category, um, based on the size of the, the project. They would have to provide forty-seven thousand six hundred square feet of common open space. Uh, the one that's different with this, uh, provision is that wetlands can be factored into common open space, um, so they are well, uh, within the means of meeting that regulation based on, uh, the plazas and trails and the wetland on-site. Uh, in terms of the conditions of the site, so the gross site area for this property is twelve acres in size, uh, there is a large wetland complex, um, mainly on the western side of this property, uh, with high-quality wetlands. Um, there's also stormwater ponds, kind of on the northern portion, uh, that were put in place with the construction of, uh, Clover Ridge Drive. Those will remain, um, as a part of this overall project site. Uh, so when you, uh, get down to the overall, uh, site area, um, minusing the wetlands and the ponding, they have a three-point-two, uh, developable area within that. Um, just a refreshment on, on where the project, uh, got approved, uh, through their steps. Uh, they are proposing a four-story apartment building at a hundred and nineteen units total, uh, access on to Clover Ridge Drive. Getting into the actual request, um, and where they're at with usable open space and what our code, uh, lays out in terms of a regulation, is fifteen percent of the gross site area, um, in this case it's twelve acres, is the gross site area, has to be, uh, devoted to usable open space, so space that can be utilized, uh, by the residents on-site. Uh, so when we take that calculation, uh, with twelve acres of gross site area, uh, we're looking at a one-point-eight acre usable open space, uh, that's required for this site. Uh, what the applicant is proposing on their project site is one-point-zero-five acres, um, so again, they're asking for a variance, uh, from the usable open space, uh, regulation, uh, below what's required. Um, they are offering or showing four different usable open space areas, uh, within their site plan. Um, one of them is an elevated patio space, uh, that can be accessed, uh, from the building, um, on the west side of the building here. There's another patio space, uh, with seating and grilling area, uh, on the east side of the building. Um, they're also showing a tout lot area, uh, just directly east, or I'm sorry, directly west of the building and where that elevated patio is, which kind of connects them to their other fourth area of usable open space, which is more of a passive, uh, trail component with benches to overlook the wetland. Uh, so getting into the variance request, uh, for this site, uh, again, the, uh, way the code is written, uh, in our zoning code is that a minimum of fifteen percent of the gross site area shall be shared open space for sites that are an acre, uh, and above in gross site area. Uh, so again, one-point-eight acres is required for this twelve-acre, uh, gross site, um, area. Again, they're proposing one-point-zero-five acres on the site, uh, so when we're looking at the deficiency calc there, they're, uh, below the requirement by zero-point-seven-five acres in deficiency. Again, there, uh, four areas that they're proposing does total of, uh, one-point-zero-five acres in size, uh, so when you kind of look at how that factors into kind of the two different areas is, that makes up thirty-three percent of their three-point-two acres of a develop- developable area, and then eight-point-seven-five of the twelve acres of gross site area. Um, so again, uh, just based on how, uh, the code is written and where they're at from a calculation standpoint, um, they're asking for a variance, uh, for that regulation. Um, when we get down to, uh, how a variance is analyzed and what needs to be met, um, it talks about practical difficulty, uh, within an actual site, um, in order to meet the regulation. Um, so the site itself again has large wetlands on-site as well as existing ponds that were created by, uh, the city. Uh, those areas do take up a majority of the gross site area at about eight-point-eight acres of the gross site areas oriented, uh, to those two uses. Uh, so again, uh, three-point-two acres are really left for, uh, development on the site, um, and when we look at one-point-eight acres, that's required for usable open space, and you negate that from the three-point-two acres, you're really left with a one-point-four acre site, uh, for an apartment and other, uh, necessities, uh, for the project. Uh, so that within itself is a practical difficult, practical difficulty that's being proposed.
You know, one thing I'll point out about that, because you guys are going to see the same thing in the next item that comes up, is exactly the same issue, is when you have a site that has, uh, like a wetland component like this, where it makes up a majority of the site, our ordinance has you calculate the usable open space based on gross, uh, square footage of, or gross acreage of the entire site, not just the developable site. So when you do that, it creates a big, uh, deviation between what is allowed for a floor area, uh, ratio on a site compared to, uh, what the open space requirements would be. The practical reality is, is that if you required them to do the open space requirement based on what's required in our zoning ordinance, because the rest of the site is so large, it would make more than half of their site undevelopable, which means that it probably couldn't develop as our comprehensive plan indicates, and so it'd be inconsistent, you couldn't develop it consistent with our comprehensive plan. The other thing that we sort of looked at too is, you know, how does this sort of relate to other projects that are within the, the community, you know, the amount of green space per unit that's out there? And so, you know, one that gets brought up a lot is like Jonathan Flats, because it's a new one, and these projects actually have more usable, uh, open space on the site than that project does. The difference with it too is that there was less gross, uh, acreage, uh, on that site to begin with, and so they didn't run into the same issues of having to account for, like, let's say the lake was in their, uh, property and then had to base open space based on the lake and that. Uh, here, they in essence have that big area plus that, so it in essence would, without granting the variance, would make it very impractical to even develop the site. So that's, that's where when we look at it, you know, we say it, it really does meet the intent of, of, of variance request, uh, because it's, it's really getting at what are the practical difficulties of that site to be able to develop.
And we've always looked at the gross site, not just.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll have, uh, our attorney address that, but we've had, you know, made sure that we've stayed consistent with them as both, you know, are we looking at this correctly by saying that it's on a gross square footage, uh, basis, and is this, uh, appropriate for a variance to be, uh, you know, provided? And that's really the two things we've been in communication with, with our attorney's office, so Matt can let him speak for himself.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Matt. And, uh, Mayor Winchell, council, I mean, the, the city's application of gross site area is consistent with the code and it's consistent with the projects I've seen. Um, as Matt said, the anomaly here is really the way the wetland is calculated and the technicality that that presents, because you end up with an outsized amount of acreage that needs to be dedicated. When you really look at the net site area, it is a five-point-seven acre site, but we can't use the night's net site area in calculating this number.
Because that's not what our code says.
So then to the second part of the question is whether or not this is a type of application that requires a variance, I say that's exactly what it is. A variance is meant to be sort of a, a blow-off valve for when the code doesn't fit perfectly, because there's no, um, there's no perfect code for the city for every project. What the city needs to find is that there's a practical difficulty that prevents a developer from developing a project on the site, um, that is unique to the natural features of the property, were not created by the applicant. That the proposed project is reasonable, given the zoning in the area, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and whether it presents a harm to the neighborhood, and will upset the unique character and quality of that neighborhood. And as I've worked with staff, we find that these three findings, from my perspective, are met, and staff has provided all the details for the qualitative findings as to why those qualities are established. Um, it's important to note there are a couple of things with statute, right? This is a statutory creature. Um, it is practical difficulty. It is not an undue hardship. Uh, what the practical difficulty means is that, um, there can be any number of potential uses to the property, uh, but a practical difficulty may still exist. Uh, the standard over about ten to twelve years ago was that there was a singular use, that the landowner had to be deprived of any other use in order to receive a variance, but that's not, excuse me, that's not the current standard, and it hasn't been now for quite some time. Um, another important part of the variance process is that economic considerations alone cannot be the reason for granting a variance, but economic considerations are sort of implicit in any decision, because you can always tie it back to, well, this is being done for money, this is being done for money, this is being done for money. Well, here we have wetlands that exist on a property that result in an enormous amount of the buildable site being required to be dedicated to open space, and that doesn't have anything to do with money, and that's the unique characteristic. Um, if you were to take a site that had no unique features, and say you had a height restriction of four stories and the developer wanted to build five stories, it'd be pretty hard to argue that that request was not driven by economics. But that's not the situation we have here. We have, as the staff indicated, we have a real technical anomaly with the code on this particular site.
I thought it was good to bring that up now, because the next item that you have is, is almost exactly the same thing, because it's just south of the site, uh, so that we can sort of understand why is it that we're coming to the recommendation that we are.
Thanks.
Kind of covers my next slide here, just getting into the. I really don't want to be redundant, um, but just getting into kind of the, the sheer facts of the site that we're dealing with, uh, does have, uh, natural wetlands on-site that weren't created by the applicant, so it kind of hits that finding number one. Um, and then related to the comprehensive plan, um, and the zoning out here, the comprehensive plan again guides this area for open space and high-density residential. Uh, the zoning is also in place, that was done with the preliminary, uh, being a planned residential district. Uh, both of these areas do allow for the use that's being proposed there. Um, and again, getting into the intent of usable open spaces to ensure that there's sufficient, uh, area being provided for the residents that they can use on-site, um, which again, we, we believe that this is being met, uh, with the amount of, uh, areas that they're providing within the site, and, uh, when it's compared to other sizable projects, uh, in the area, um, it, it definitely exceeds, um, what we've seen in comparable projects. Um, and again, uh, granting the variance, uh, in our perspective would not create, um, a result that would, uh, create an alteration to the essential character of the locality or the neighborhood. So with that, uh, we do feel that all three findings are being met, uh, with this variance application, uh, so with that, uh, we are asking to make a motion this evening to adopt, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eighty-eight, uh, which is approving the variance from zoning section fifteen point two eight point one two zero F one, uh, for usable opens- open space to reduce, uh, the usable open space for Clover Ridge Apartments from fifteen percent, uh, down to eight-point-seven-five percent, based on the findings, uh, that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any other questions. Um, we, we do have the applicant in the audience as well, if you have specific questions for them.
Questions for Liz? Not hearing anything. Okay. Um, what's your thoughts?
I think that was a good explanation, and I feel comfortable with this, so I think plenty of review has been done on it, and, um, you know, I think as long as we've maintained some level of consistency, and it sounds like we have, then I think this makes sense, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I've spent a countless amount of time reviewing the materials, reviewing the variance, revering the criteria, reviewing neighborhood concerns, and, um, I feel that it's met the criteria for the variance. I understand that that, um, may come as a, it's a difficult decision, being a neighborhood representative of that word, um, in the sense that, you know, I'm a council member for the word, but I look at the project as, as its own, and it, and it has met the criteria for the variance, so.
Yeah, in this case, you know, the, you know, this particular one, you know, we kind of dove into some of the complexities in this, and, you know, based on the legal criteria, I mean, there's really not a lot of options to build this without a variance, so, you know, from that perspective, I, to me, it meets that practical difficulty from that perspective. You know, you know, if had it been, as, um, our, uh, council mentioned, had it been that hardship definition like ten years ago, it would be a different story, but in this case, you know, you know, it, it meets it.
I have nothing to add.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the same. I, I think that we've, we've dove into this, we've got, we've had some tough questions asked about this, and we've looked into this, and it's, we're following what we've done, uh, on a routine basis, that we look at the whole site, um, and then we look at the reasonings behind. We had the three factors there. Uh, I, I'm comfortable, uh, in, in doing this as well, so I, I really don't have any issues with that, so. So, with that, I would, uh, ask if there's somebody that wants to make a motion one way or another.
I'll move to recommend city council approval of variance from zoning section fifteen dot twenty-eight dot one twenty dot F one to reduce the usable space of Clover Ridge Apartments from fifteen down to eight-point-seven-five, based on stated findings.
Second.
So, so a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Hatfield. Again, this is adopting resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighty-eight approving the variance for Clover Ridge Apartments. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we move to, um, adopt resolutions twenty twenty-two dash eighty-nine, twenty twenty-two dash ninety, twenty twenty-two dash ninety-one approving final site and building, uh, plan, final plat, and variances for gallery apartments.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is the site that is south of the railroad tracks at Clover Ridge Drive and, uh, well, the Twin Cities Western Railroad, uh, so just directly to the south of the project we were just talking about. Uh, this, uh, difference with this site is that, um, the prior project had already gone through final site and building plan and everything and just had the variance. This one, this is the final, uh, with consideration of variances in there. So this is coming out of the Planning Commission with a recommendation of approval, and, uh, Liz is here to make a presentation on it.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. Uh, we have a final site and building plan, final plat and variances, uh, request this evening, uh, for the Gallery Chaska Apartments, uh, being proposed by Chase Real Estate. Um, so to, just briefly go over the three-step process, we're at the third and final stage in the three-step process. Um, the site is, uh, highlighted above, um, it's the entire site, uh, shown on the west side of Clover Ridge Drive, south of Twin Cities and Western Railroad, um, and situated within, uh, the Clover Ridge neighborhood. So in terms of, uh, the approvals that have occurred, uh, with this site, um, it dates back to the year two thousand, uh, when the Clover Ridge Concept Plan was approved, uh, which set up the, the stage for the entire development, uh, within Clover Ridge. Um, and then specifically for this site, they came, um, with their concept plan in December of twenty twenty-one. At that time, it was coupled with Sagewood Third, uh, which is also known as Oak Creek, uh, the development proposed by D.R. Horton. Uh, they did couple their, uh, project together, uh, due to the, uh, proposal of the new street to access Oak Creek that would run through, um, the, the site in question, uh, this evening to see how both of those uses would fit and, uh, create a site, uh, out of, um, the right-of-way that's needed for a new street extension. Um, and then in May of twenty twenty-two, they did, uh, separate off, um, and come forward with their preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat, uh, for the gallery apartments. Um, and just wanted to note that, uh, the developer did also, uh, have, uh, an additional, uh, neighborhood meeting on July ninth, kind of in between the preliminary, uh, approvals up until now, uh, to meet with the neighbors. Just to go over kind of the, the order of things and how things have changed, uh, through the process, um, starting with concept plan, um, and moving into preliminary and final here, uh, when they came through in December of twenty twenty-one, uh, they showed a little bit different of a layout, um, and scale, uh, for the building, and at that time, they showed a hundred and sixty-two units, four stories, a flat roof concept, uh, with an elevator shaft, and then two levels of underground parking. Uh, the layout and building footprint was also, uh, different than what is being proposed this evening. Uh, the way they changed in between that time is they, uh, had a hundred and seventy-five units and four stories, uh, they changed to a pitched roof concept and then one level of underground parking between those two steps. Um, just to highlight a little bit more on the building footprint changing from concept into preliminary, so the concept, uh, layout and footprint is shown in red, and then below is, uh, what changed, uh, after concept into preliminary and what's, um, being reflected in final as well. So there, there were concerns with the, uh, building footprint and layout and specifically that western facade and what was facing the wetland and adjacent residential. Uh, they've significantly have changed that, um, moving into preliminary, um, and what's reflected in final here in terms of, uh, the overall, uh, visual that you see, uh, from those areas, um, to, uh, hit those comments that were received during, uh, concept plan. And then from preliminary plan up until what we're seeing this evening, um, just a couple things to note of changes. things to note of changes. There was a concern during the preliminary that not all the civil plans reflected one another in terms of the layout shown. So what they're showing in the civil plans do reflect the same layout. They have enhanced their landscape plan from preliminary to add more screening around the parking lot edges, specifically the ones that face towards residential. They've enhanced that. The accessibility portion, there was a comment on ADA being met with those pathways down to the trail. The northwesterly pass or path from the building to the regional trail will be ADA accessible. There was also comments on a tot lot during the preliminary. So what they've been working on with the Jonathan Association, which you see reflected in a letter from the Jonathan Association, is that the association is amenable to a donation being made to their association in lieu of them putting a tot lot into their site plan. And this donation would be utilized towards existing tot lots owned by the Jonathan Association. So they determine that that is an amenable approach to the tot lot comment and would provide a much more efficient solution to that concern. And then an additional change to the overall site plan is they have added a dog run to the site plan, which is within the usable open space area west of the building near the regional trail. Just to give a refresher on the comp plan and the Clover Ridge concept plan and what's been put in place, the comprehensive plan guides this area to be high-density residential and open space. And they do meet that guidance with this plan. The Clover Ridge concept plan also guided this area for multifamily residential, which the apartment use is consistent with that. The zoning is put in place out here and was put in place with the Clover Ridge neighborhood several years ago. And they do meet the zoning that's put in place. Getting back to those PRD development standards relating to building setbacks, lot coverage, Florida area ratio, and common open space, they do meet all four of those development standards that are laid out within that. And again, just getting into some of the specifics here, the Florida area ratio is calculated off of the gross site area, in which case this property is 24 and a half acres in gross site area. And that is the acreage after you negate out the Oak Creek development from the project. They are left with a 24 and a half acre site. So the current request that's in front of you this evening is for final site and building plan and final plat approval for 175-unit apartment building. There are two variance requests on the table as well. One is a variance from zoning section 15.28.030F, which is the required number of off-street parking spaces. And then they're also asking for a variance like the initial item tonight from zoning section 15.28.120F1, the usable open space regulation. So again, getting into the details of the site, the site itself is 24 and a half acres total in gross site area. And again, just to clarify that that's the acreage in gross site area after you take out the Oak Creek development and the right-of-way needed for Oak Creek Drive to access that development. There is a large wetland complex on site, again, that takes up a majority of the gross site area. And when you negate that out from the gross site area, you're left with a 5.7 developable area within that. Getting into the site plan here, again, they're proposing 175 units within a 5.7-acre developable site within the 24 and a half acres. The layout is pretty much the same from preliminary here. They have two access points, one located off of Clover Ridge Drive, which would be kind of the main access into the site itself. A secondary access will be proposed off of Oak Creek Drive, which again, will be that new street extension that will access the Oak Creek development proposed by D.R. Horton. They will also have an access off that point, which would provide access to their parking and where they access their underground parking lot. In terms of parking, they, again, are below our typical requirement for multifamily proposals, which requires two parking stalls per dwelling unit to be met on site based on their surface parking and their underground parking. They're at 313 total stalls, which means 1.8 parking stalls per dwelling unit. So again, that's deficient by .2 parking stalls per our zoning ordinance. And then just an item to note, just based on how we've been reviewing these apartment projects, is we've looked at a one parking stall per one-bedroom provision or ratio that has worked in previous projects before. So getting into the raw data on that, they are proposing 215 total bedrooms, so 313 parking stalls to 215 total bedrooms, which is well over what we normally are, what we would typically see for that ratio.
Just a question on the bedroom conversation. That's just, this is a state of the office, but I want to state the obvious in this case. That's literally just looking at the floor plans, kind of the bedrooms. Reality of the being that that could be a family bedroom and that could be a child's bedroom.
Right.
Clearly not driving a car or needs a car.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Just the total amount, yep.
Yeah, and I think one other thing to point out is, I mean, probably the most recent conversation that we had with this was on Jonathan Flats, which is up next to Dairy Queen. I think it was 1.6.
Seven, I believe.
1.6 or 1.7. So it has not been unusual for us to have that number of, that ratio of parking stalls. And we have found that using the bedroom count is a good method for determining the required parking. In fact, we talked about the ordinance, the audit that we're doing. That's actually one of them that we're going to be coming back and talking about, is that we're over parking sites when we're requiring two parking stalls per unit. The bedroom count has been much more accurate for that, you know, just given the fact that some of the units are going to have kids in them. And if they're single, you know, they obviously have one car. It's just been a much more accurate count. And quite frankly, we've always said with parking is the people who should care most about the parking is the developer themselves. Because if they don't have the parking to be able to support people, they're not going to be able to rent units.
Yeah, I'd hate to say that. You know, long-term trend's not yet decided, but I think a trend has started with more work from home. And I think people's behaviors and how many cars a family, a family would potentially own is changing as well. And so, you know, that, could that quickly come the other direction? It could. So I'm not hanging my hat on that perspective. I think that's a reality here, too, is that I think there are families in my neighborhood who have one car. I'm technically down to one car right now. But, you know, I think some of that is just changing behaviors of commuting and creating, you know, a perspective of green and whatnot and working from home.
But I do think it's still important for us as a council to watch that because depending where they start on-street parking, then that's our problem.
Yeah.
Even though, I mean, you're right, the developer does need to really be cognizant of that, but we do as well. But so far, it's, it's been, it's been working well.
And the thing I like about this is this is over what we would typically say is the right amount to park. You know, like I said, it was, what, 1.6, 1.7 for Jonathan Flats? This is 1.8. So it even goes above what we've seen for that typical parking ratio for most apartment buildings.
And, you know, I live over by Jonathan Flats, so, you know, see that pretty regularly. Parking lots, I mean, there's always spaces out there on the surface side. I mean, within evenings, usually when you would expect that it'd be filled up because everyone's home and that sort of thing. And, you know, obviously, the key thing is you want to build a just right amount because enough for like, you know, Saturday when you have some people over, that sort of thing. But, you know, you don't want to overbuild and have a sea of asphalt out there because that's also not good either.
That was my one question was, so we talked about Jonathan Flats, but how is the parking at Jonathan Flats? I mean...
Jonathan Flats has actually worked out real well. That's actually probably the best test of any apartment building we have in sight because there's a site that clearly has no other places you could park other than at the site because there's no street parking around there. The rest of the place is tow if you park. So we have had no issues with parking up there.
And the developer has talked about marketing to certain, you know, age, right? You know, millennial and empty nesters, so.
Which is the exact same as Jonathan Flats.
Yeah, I mean, that's where my, you know, you talk about kids not driving cars, but if that's not what they're marketing to, then the bedrooms are being used by probably people that are old enough to drive. We have to consider that. So, and we have to consider the location in the sense that they can't park on the street over there.
No, that's where, I think that's been our best test of the ratio is Jonathan Flats because if there was a problem there, it would be a real problem because there's no other parking stalls to go to.
Does, as we start looking at this, we're looking at that parking, does the watershed have anything about hard surfaces?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, does that?
Well, it impacts how big the ponds have to be.
Okay.
So it definitely impacts the size of the building that can go on a site because the more site you have to eat up to take care of impervious surface, the more developers...
Apparently I was looking before that because they didn't, a lot of times, they didn't care to have these big, giant parking lots.
They don't care as long as you treat it.
Yeah, now, now we're treating it, it's different, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right, thanks. Sorry, Liz, we keep that...
Nope, that's okay. Good discussion. So getting into the usable open space that they provide for this site, they are calculating out at 1.35 acres of their site is oriented towards usable open space. And that will come in a couple different forms that they're proposing, one of them being, or majority of it, being the plaza area in between the building that will provide landscaping, seating area, grilling, fire pit, and then a outdoor pool, which will overlook the wetland there. And then there will be trails, again, extended from the site into the regional trail that they are proposing to extend with this project, which will provide that contiguous connection or piece that's missing out there today. It stubs off and this will allow it to provide a full connection from the site into Clover Ridge Drive where the regional trail exists today. And then alongside that, they are proposing a dog run for the residents to be able to use.
So when they're just saying a dog run, is that a fenced area?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a fenced in where the residents can bring their dogs and run around. This is just a zoomed in of the plaza space, if we need to refer back to that. Just a couple section drawings, which we've provided during the preliminary as well, just to show that comparison of the site and the neighboring areas, if we need to refer back. The building design has changed, or it changed during the preliminary stage. So they did go to more of a color palette that's more visible in Clover Ridge neighborhood. So they did make that change during the preliminary submittal in response to comments received during that time. So that ring reflects in this final submittal. A mix of brick and stone and LP will be utilized on the building and they'll meet our ordinance requirements for multifamily. Couple renderings of the building itself from mainly Clover Ridge Drive here. So looking at the main entrance of the building and then from Clover Ridge Drive, looking northwest from the sidewalk there is what you would see. Getting into the variance requests, so the first one would be from section 15.28.030F for the required number of off-street parking spaces. So again, two spaces per dwelling unit are required for this type of use. So in essence, that would be 350 parking stalls on site for the 175-unit building that they're proposing. Again, they're proposing 313 stalls on site, which is a 37-stall deficit from our regulation. So again, they're asking for a variance from that. And then the three findings are the same in terms of practical difficulty, unique characteristics of the property that exist, still staying consistent with our comprehensive plan and zoning, and then ensuring that it doesn't change the character of the locality. Getting into finding number one, much like the other site that we reviewed ahead of this one, there is a large wetland complex on site that does push the developable area within a certain area itself that can be developed. The topography of the site and the boundaries of the site that can actually be developed do create practical difficulty that weren't created by the applicant themselves. Due to the parking require, or the setback requirements and buffer requirements, it does prove difficult to meet the additional parking stalls to meet the zoning out there. So again, finding number one is being met with the unique characteristics that are present on site, creating a practical difficulty. Getting into the comprehensive plan and the zoning, again, it's guided to be open space and high-density residential. The planned multi-use district does also allow for the multifamily use that's being proposed. So the use and what's being proposed is consistent with finding number two. And then in addition to that, what they're proposing from a parking count, it is comparable in terms of a ratio for meeting a one-to-one for parking stall per bedroom count is being met. And again, we have seen that reflected in other projects within the city. A couple of those, as mentioned before, like Jonathan Flats has 117 units, 156 bedrooms, and 199 parking stalls. And then another location in Chaska that meets that ratio is North Meadows Apartments, which is south of Angler Boulevard nearby our fire station. They have 127 units, a total of 259 bedrooms, and then 259 parking stalls.
Please, I just wanted to comment because North Meadows actually jumped out to me because we were talking about this one-to-one ratio. And I'll be honest, mentally in my head, I felt like this was a newer, because we were using the Jonathan Flats. North Meadows is 15-plus years because I moved, when I first moved to Chaska, that's where I lived. So to me, I think I just want to point out, because like, I was mentally thinking like, oh, Jonathan Flats, that's where we applied this. And that's obviously a newer developer. But we've used that standard for, in this case, at least 15 years.
Yeah, I think that was 2003, 2004.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, like I said, that to me jumped out when I saw that because like, I guess I was just thinking like, this is a newer standard of the bedroom ratio versus the dwelling ratio. And so it's not. We've consistently for, you know, many years applied that. So, interesting.
Yep. And I believe the new name of it is Chaska Place Apartments, too. So just want to clarify that.
I was like, wait.
Yeah.
We also don't think it's the worst thing for us to be able to address these through negotiations because every, I mean, you sort of brought it up before, is every apartment's sort of geared towards a different type of user. If all of a sudden you, if it was geared more towards more families, it might be a very different story. And so I do think, you know, getting the parking ratio is right, is really important and stuff. And so I think that's, that's where I think it's really good for us to understand the details of who these units are being marketed towards, you know, who's going to be using them, those types of things, to be able to come up with what we think is the right parking ratio.
And then the last finding, again, reverts to consistency with the comp plan, but also speaking to whether or not it's altering the essential character of the neighborhood it's locating in, which really ties in with where we've seen this implemented in other locations, variating from the parking provision within the site would not alter the essential character. Uh, variating from, um, the parking, uh, provision within the site would not, uh, alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as we've seen it before. Uh, the second variance request is from section 15.28120F1 for usable open space. Um, and again, this, um, uh, regulation speaks to a minimum of 15% of the growth site area shall be shared open space uh, for sites that are acre and above. Um, so getting down to what, what that would mean for this site, which is a 24 and a half acre site. Um, it would require that 3.68 acres of the site would be oriented towards usable open space. Uh, they are proposing 1.35 acres, um, which is a 2.33 acre deficiency from that 3.6 requirement. Um, and again, they are proposing three different areas, uh, within the site, um, to provide for usable open space, um, which I noted in a previous slide, um, in equating to 1.35 acres, uh, so how that breaks down, uh, between the developable area and the growth site area, it takes up, uh, the 1.35 acres takes up 24% of the 5.7, um, developable area and then it takes up 5.5% of the growth site area of 24 and a half acres. Uh, so again, they're, they're asking for a variance, uh, from that regulation in the code. Um, and much like, uh, the argument in, uh, the, uh, first variance request is, uh, they also have, uh, a majority of the site being, um, taken up by existing wetlands, um, and that takes up a majority of the area at around 17.79 acres of the total growth site area. Uh, so when you take that away, it leaves a 5.7 acre, uh, area for development. Uh, and then when you factor in what the usable open space regulation would take from that, uh, it would leave it down to a 2.02 acre area for apartment, uh, use. Um, so that in itself is the practical difficulty, uh, that's being faced with. Um, and again, um, trying not to be too redundant here, but all three findings are being met. Um, finding one being the natural characteristics of the site creating a practical diff- difficulty in meeting the regulation. Uh, finding two, uh, the comprehensive plan and the zoning, uh, are, uh, being met, uh, in terms of multifamily development, what they're proposing, uh, meets that criteria and again, um, the intent of, uh, the usable open space is to provide a sufficient amount, uh, for the residents on site, so 1.35 acres that they're proposing um, is similar or greater than, um, similar-sized projects within the city. Um, and then, uh, granting the variance, uh, would not result in a proposed use, uh, that would alter the essential character of the locality. Uh, so we have three separate motions with this one, um, one of them being a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-89, which is approving the final site and building plan and final plat for Gallery Chaska Apartments. Uh, and then, uh, based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution, uh, there will be an additional resolution, um, 2022-90, which would be approving the variance from zoning section 15.28030F to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from 350 to 313 based on the findings within that resolution. And then the last motion would be to adopt resolution number 2022-91, approving the variance from zoning section 15.28120F1, uh, to reduce the usable open space for the gallery apartments from 15% down to 5.5% uh, based on the findings listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any additional questions you may have, uh, we do have the applicant slash developer in the audience as well, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Questions for Liz? Staff, anyone? Okay. Thoughts, we have three votes here. I think the final's fairly straightforward. We've got through the three steps. And the other two we can talk about. Talk about all three. But, anyone, uh, comment?
Uh, I went last, last time and said nothing to add, so I can go first this time and add, I guess. Um, the parking thing I'm fine with, I, I, I'm in agreement with, you know, kind of the options and the timing and, and, and kind of using that perspective. You know, I, uh, as a profession, uh, believe in consistency, uh, because consistency is important. I also believe in being practical and sometimes those things.
Buddy the water.
Buddy the water, right? And they're butts heads and sometimes you, it, it, can you be, you know, I, maybe sometimes throw an HR question out, can, you know, tell me if you'd rather be flexible or consistent and why? Um, that's a mean HR question to ask, by the way. Um, but the reality here is, is that y- you do have to be practical and look at that space and say, the ultimate goal of the city is to develop that space in a comprehensive plan for multifamily use and you have this big piece of land that is being done on both properties, now we're talking about this one, by a wetland. And so, you know, I don't like making exceptions and in this case, the fancy word for exceptions are variances, right? But you look and say, okay, the practical approach to this, if you, if, if you meet the needs that the city desires for the space to be, that benefits residents and benefits future residents, right? There is a demand for this type of housing in the city of Chaska. You ha- you have to think at it practical and I think where we look at this and where we dug into the legal code, it, it provides a practical understanding that, uh, you know, the common person can look at and go, we're clearly not going to fill in that wetland, probably legally can't, right? And so practically speaking, the numbers, you know, work and it, and it makes sense to make the variance. And truth for me, and then it's like, okay, if we're going to be consistent on a variance, let's look at the three things that cause a variance in order to be approved and we meet those things. You know, so that's been my perspective, you know, anytime we looked at a variance, you know, I, I don't, like I said, by, by traits, I'd like to be consistent with our processes and in this case, we're, we are being consistent and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question for the developer. You had a neighborhood meeting that was here in July. Was there any sort of like feedback or any changes or any benefits to you in regards to maybe some of the neighborhood feedback from that meeting?
Uh, the recent one I had?
Mm-hmm.
A couple of weeks ago, uh, there were four people attended, um, the primary discussion was over the two variants, uh, the one variance item. The majority of the issue was brought up over the square footage area and the size of the building.
Okay, I didn't know, maybe there were changes that were made between.
Well, I mean, we, I think Liz covered the changes over the last two months we've made, which are in that, on that list.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
Nothing?
Um, well, no, I mean, I guess I can go. Um, you know, I guess I, I echo Councilmember Gra's statements in ret- in regards to practicality and why these variants are here and looking at the, the site and the building itself and the changes that have been made from concept to now, I feel like it fits really well. The materials have changed significantly to blend in with the neighborhood. The zoning's been there for high-density residential. There is a significant need for this type of housing. I understand that any changes to a landscape for residents that already have homes there is, is a hardship to them. It's a change and change is scary and I empathize with that change. I empathize with the idea that, you know, when you look out your backyard window, that it may not look the same way that it's going to look. But I also empathize with the idea that, you know, I get countless number of phone calls and emails over residents that are really vying to have a home here and have a property here and also just be able to live here. And they might be in a circumstance that they can't afford a house at this moment, so they need an apartment. I can get into the argument of what rent costs and things of that nature and these aren't what I deem as affordable housing. But, because these are market-rate apartments and that's a whole other discussion in and of itself. But there's still a need for this housing nonetheless and my hope is that providing ample housing in this stock will drive prices down so that all apartment housing can be a little bit more affordable if there's more provided to the community. And it has to start somewhere. And that doesn't mean that I don't empathize with the neighbors that are sitting in the audience that I've had long discussions and I've read every email and walked the properties and looked at everything, that doesn't mean that I don't care to know that their landscape's going to change. But I also know that it's bigger than, you know, one neighborhood, one street. It doesn't mean it's more important, but it's just in relative of everybody, every plot, every development. Every person in this community matters. And I just feel that this is a really a big need and I look at the apartment itself and it's done really well. And the people that live there will have nice accommodations and I understand the percentages with usable open space, I look at the amenities that are provided to the people that will live there and provided to the surrounding areas, the completions of trail systems for everybody to enjoy. And I think it's done well and I don't think it's done in a way that is just for financial gain. I think it's, it meets the criteria that's listed, so I guess those are my thoughts as a whole on this.
I think Councilmember Hubbard brings up a good point of something we don't often think about, but the economics of developments like this where we maybe feel like it doesn't fit or it's too big. Um, where, where there's a demand, if there's not supply, it's very easy, we haven't necessarily seen in our community, but it happened, happens in other communities. If you don't supply that demand, that housing demand, and let's say we let just a few houses go in instead, you will effectively price out your, if you live in that neighborhood, you could price yourself out by not allowing the demand to be met. And so I think that's one of the economics that people don't always think about, is that you have to at some point meet the demand with supply and if not, the prices will skyrocket because there is so much demand and that economics is just sometimes overlooked when we look at things like this because it, it's not, it, that you're not tied to it with your heart, I mean, this is more emotional. We react to things, that is just economics, that's not feelings. But that's something that people don't always think about, but is a very real thing that happens in many communities, so.
And I'd like to just piggyback on one more thing as she brings that up. You know, you look at the neighborhood of Clover Ridge as a whole and the intentional intention of Clover Ridge. And you drive through that neighborhood and you see a multitude of different housing. You see single-family homes with larger lots, you see single-family homes with smaller lots. Apartments, townhomes, the intention is there. I think, I can't speak for anybody that buys a property there or rents an apartment, um, or a townhome. But I think that when you're a part of that neighborhood, you're a part of that vibe and know what's going on in that neighborhood and what the intention is as far as the building of it.
Thanks.
So, you know, I tend to look at it from a little different lens. I tend to look at it from more of a technical lens of the, you know, legally does it meet the criteria from the legal perspective? You know, I spent nine years on board adjustment just doing nothing but variances for Carver County. And, you know, I, you know, read some feedback from, you know, submitted by some, uh, residents, but to a couple of residents and yesterday, today, um, did quite a bit of research. And, you know, based on my understanding of where it sits, you know, this does meet the criteria for that and I feel for you guys, you know, I appreciate, and I appreciate all the work that you put into your, um, all the documentation, the research you put into it. But I didn't necessarily arrive at the same conclusion as you, uh, but I do appreciate the work that you put into it. And, you know, would I have liked the building a little smaller? Yeah, you know, would I have liked it to be set back a little differently and things, absolutely. But this is where we're at and I'm looking at it from a, just a strictly a variance perspective. And from that perspective, you know, that's, you know, I'm looking at it as purely a technical decision. Um, you know, are there things I'd like to change about it? Sure, but it's not necessarily in my, our purview of what we're up here to cast a vote on. So, but I do appreciate the, all the effort you guys put into this and appreciate you attending and spending time to be engaged with this because it's better to have engagement than to, you know, just make this decision out of the vacuum, right? Because I think it does, it does force us to think about things and are we doing this right? Are we looking at the right things from the law, the ordinances and things? And I think that's important because that's a part of what makes it a healthy process, so thank you guys for doing that.
Okay, I, I, I'm, uh, with most, the, the parking, I'm, I, I'm good with, uh, the variance, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about it. I, I think that we followed, we've been consistent, which is what we always have tried to do and be consistent. I think that the, the resident comments have been listened to, I think, because the buildings changed from a big, you know, a big sea to now an age that I think really changes the whole look of the project. I think it opens up and I, I just think it's more of a quality product and as Councilmember Hubbard talked about, how you change your views, uh, that, that you've had open for so many years. Uh, I, I think that it's important that a quality p- product goes there and I think, I think we're there, we've, they've, things have been asked for and I think the developer has done things to make that project what we're looking for. So I'm, I, I feel, I feel comfortable, uh, in, in all three of the, the resolutions that we have to terminate, so I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with that, our, the resolutions and our, our variances, so. Um, I do know that the two gentlemen that have put a lot of time into this and I do, uh, along with Councilmember Law, I appreciate all your efforts in that. And I, uh, this is not a public hearing, but I, I know that you're here, I'm, I'm willing to say, uh, you've got five minutes. If you want to get up and say something, more than welcome, but, uh, I think, um, we have, uh, looked at your emails. I believe everything, to my knowledge, has been pretty much addressed, but I want to at least give you the opportunity that if you'd like to speak, uh, you're more than welcome to, so.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilman. Um, Travis Olson, 1439 Sophia Drive. Um, I will say thank you for the process. Um, the good thing, what I've learned through this whole thing is that you don't always get to what you want. But having the opportunity to have your first voices heard is the intent here. Um, walking in here tonight, walking into planning on, on Wednesday, I didn't expect anything to change. But having the opportunity to be able to voice is what we're looking for and to be able to hold to account what's happening. Um, and just specifically on the project, you know, and I, I, we spoke on, you know, the Saturday for the meetings. We'll welcome those residents, you know, it's like, they're going to be our neighbors, we're going to, we're going to receive them just like with anybody else. But when you're talking about the development, how the, how the sausage gets made, that's when it can kind of get down to the dirty, down dirty. Um, at the end of the day, we're going to have new neighbors. Um, I do want to make the comment that we keep on referencing back to the changes they've made since concept. Chase wasn't involved in the concept plan, it was a back-of-the-napkin, very little to it, so, and we've had the conversation of how much detail needs to be in, in concept versus preliminary and how it goes through the process. And I think what's highlighted for this project specifically is what's needed to be able to have that good discussion and when that discussion needs to be made. Um, and that's really what I was looking for, is to be able to highlight the areas for opportunity that we can have, both from citizens, from planning commission as well as council, how to make this process work. That's why I want to be part of planning, to be able to make this work better. Um, and like I said, don't always get what you want, I, I understand that, but it's having your voice heard and, you know, thank you for at least hearing us and, and I, I take that and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, my foot's asleep. All right. Uh, again, Wade Sorenson, 1456 Sophia Drive.
A couple of quick comments. One thing that this process has shown is that there are some serious issues in the Chaska City Code. The floor area ratio has three different definitions for how it could be calculated. One has gross site, one is net site, and one has for the R3 property type. So if there is going to be a process to look at code, I would love to be part of that process because there are some issues that need to be resolved. Because you could look at the code in different ways, and first of all, this should be a 5.7 acre property, not 24. But I'll move beyond that. But consistency of net versus gross and how to define that and when to use one versus the other, I think the city's playing very loose with these definitions here, right? Last comment is just realize that the precedence that you're setting here tonight, letting the wetland of an adjacent property that's not even on the applicant's site, letting that wetland dictate parking spaces, I think is a very dangerous precedence. One that anybody on any property that it joins a wetland could probably, you know, try to use that as their justification for variance. So I, I do think you're being a little short-sighted to get this particular project approved. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, I want to make a comment though, because I think on that, I would say that sites with wetlands, that should be considered. You know, so to say is short-sighted there, I disagree, and which I respectfully disagree. Because I do think that is a, not a man-made, you know, like the variance says, it wasn't made by the builder.
Yeah.
So I, you know, I would fully expect a future apartment complex or something like that had a wetland on a, you know, property that impacted their ability to at least ask the question, right?
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's that first, like, the biggest of the three of those variants on there is that it's a result of a property that wasn't created by the applicant who created it. It's existing in the topography of the land.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't go shovel out and pour water in overnight and call it a wetland thing. So I, I just want to comment, because like I think that is a very clear-cut, non-man-made reality in that situation.
Well, if I could just one quick comment to that.
Sure.
And I would address this almost to the city attorney, to look at the case of Castle Design versus City of Lake Elmo. That's, this exact scenario played out in that case. The developer was not given the variance, and they moved into that property knowing the wetland was there. And their variance request was denied because of that. So that particular case is very similar to this one, and that's, you know, you should look at that. So, and again, they're buying a 5.7 acre parcel of land. This property, this project, this building requires 8.8 acres. At the end of the day, that should be all you need to know. An 8.8, a building that needs 8.8 acres is being put on a 5.7 acre parcel.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And I would just comment that I don't think the, the parking has nothing to do with the wetlands. That's, we've talked about it at great length, that we've been doing it on all of our apartment buildings. So I don't think that parking has anything to do with the wetland, so. Right. With that, we have three items to do here. I will just take them in order, if there are no further discussion. I want to make sure everyone has opportunity to speak. We're all good up here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. With that, then I, I would look at adopting Resolution 2022-89, which is approving the final site and building plan for the Gallery Apartments.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second, second by Councilmember Long. Again, this is 2022-89, which is approving final site and building plan. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. The next one I have on is the Resolution 2022-90, approving the variance from zoning to reduce the number of off-street parking from 350 to 313. So, motion by Councilmember Grau.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Motion carries. All right, then I have, switch page. Then I have adopt resolution 2022-91, approving the variance from zoning section 15.28.120F-1, a usable open space to reduce usable space for the Gallery Apartments from 15 to 5.5.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. And I believe that is it on that one, right? Yep. All right. Thanks, everyone. All right, we move to 7C. Adopt resolution 2022-92, approving preliminary plot for Hidden Maples.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item that you actually saw quite some time ago. This is the School District 112 property that was sold sort of behind the Southwest Co-op site a couple of years ago. We did see a concept plan that came forward before for this, calling for five single-family homes. You'll see the applicant is coming with a proposal for four single lot, single-family homes on this property and is coming to the, from the Planning Commission with recommendation for approval. So I'll turn over to Liz to go through the, go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We have a preliminary plat in front of us this evening for the project known as Hidden Maples, being proposed by Landmark Builders. The site is located in downtown Chaska. It's on the eastern side of Highway 41. The streets that flank most of the sides are Sixth Street East on the north side there, Maple Street to the west and south. And it makes up a half-block of one of the blocks within downtown Chaska. It was the, was the former location of Fireman's Park 2, which you can see in this aerial. And I'll get into some of the details surrounding that a little bit later. But in terms of the planning process, we're at the second step in the process for preliminary plat. They'll still have another step with us to move forward. As I mentioned before, this site was the former site of Fireman's Park 2. It was never a public park, so the city didn't own this plot of land. It was owned by the school district. So even though it looked and felt like a public park, it never actually was one, and it was never considered a public park within the city's inventory either. Around 2019, the school did opt to sell the site and did approach the city with an agreement for first right of refusal. So the city had the first say at whether or not they wanted to acquire this property from the school. So the city did look into that a little bit further. When they were approached in 2019, the Park and Rec Commission did review the possible acquisition of this property at three of their meetings in 2019. They did come to the determination that they were not going to pursue the site. And so shortly thereafter, the park sign that was on the site was removed so that it didn't create any future confusion that, of people surrounding the property that it was a public park. The city did determine that they wanted to further evaluate the area next to St. John's Church for a future park space, or neighborhood park within downtown. And that is consistent with both the city's comprehensive plan and downtown master plan that has guided that specific area for expansion of a neighborhood park. And regarding that, discussions are still ongoing with the church in order to acquire that area for a neighborhood park. I just want to bring up those excerpts from our downtown master plan specifically, just calling out that area next to St. John's as that future neighborhood park area and not the site in question this evening, which is guided within our comp plan, but also in our downtown master plan for medium-density residential, which the proposal is consistent with. And as Matt mentioned, they are asking for four single-family lots for their preliminary plat request. The zoning is already in place within downtown Chaska, being R2, which is a medium-density residence zoning district. And then also the comprehensive plan guides it that way as well. So what they're proposing is consistent with what's in place out there. The site itself is about one acre in size. Again, there's an existing playground there that was a part of the Fireman's Park 2, but that will be removed as they start to gear up for working on the site, which could be very soon here. There are a few trees that have been surveyed on the site, and I'll get into that a little bit more on this slide. Again, they're, they're looking at a four-lot layout. They started with five lots during their concept plan as kind of a reflection of what's seen on the other side of the block here. But due to some constraints with where right-of-way actually sits today and squeezing kind of that south portion of the area, it just made more sense to pare it down to four lots, which is consistent with the other side of Maple Street, which also shows four single-family lots. So it does mirror the other side of the street there. So the pre-plat would also clean up the lot lines out here in terms of where right-of-way needs to be for Maple Street and Fifth Street East. So with the pre-plat there, the applicant is working with the city to deed off the appropriate amount of right-of-way for Maple Street and the sidewalk along that so that everything fits into how it is designed out there. The lots, due to the, the poor soils and conditions out there, they are not proposing basements. These will be slab-on-grade homes. The homes itself, they are proposing them to be two-story tall. Previously, they showed one story, but due to the fact that they don't have the ability to do basements out there feasibly, they are requesting to do a, a two-story structure for all of the lots. Two of them, the ones on the corners, will be two-stall garages, and then the ones in the interior will have three-stall garages. There was a comment kind of during the process here to ensure that the type of homes that they propose out here, trying to, in whatever way they can, implement some, some elements within the design of these homes to really fit into the context of the neighborhood here. We do see kind of a variety of different house types out here. Across the street, you'll see kind of more of that older home product. There are newer homes kind of on the northeast portion of Sixth Street East. So it, it's kind of a balancing act of trying to provide something that will kind of fit the neighborhood as best as possible. So something for them to work on as they move forward. They did survey 14 trees on site, and a majority of those will be taken down. A lot of these, mostly on the northwest side, are of very small caliber, of being six inches or, or below. And then the ones that are kind of that larger caliber on the south side there are mainly ash trees. So something the city would encourage to take away just due to the presence of emerald ash borer. So just from a staff's perspective, what's being taken down, there wasn't anything that was of significance in terms of trying to, to save on this site. They will propose new trees with the lots, so new maple trees will be added to this area. And the lots that are being proposed in the layouts of the homes will meet the R2 setbacks as it's shown in this layout. So just a couple of things to work on for final, just finalizing the type of homes that they're planning to build out there, working on kind of the overall design, fitting into the, the neighborhood as, as much as possible on the front end of things. We realize things change between a plat and going through a building permit process, but trying to work on maybe some elements that can really fit the, the product into the, the context. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make one motion this evening to adopt Resolution Number 2022-92, which is approving the preliminary plat for Hidden Maples, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the developer in the audience as well.
The power lines?
Yeah, power line, that's what I was wondering, is that big power line? Because I just don't see it on, I guess I could be looking at the wrong drawing, but.
Yeah, the.
The big one, I'm not understanding.
Right there, yeah.
The pole is right here, so it actually falls outside of their lot lines, and they are showing to kind of fit in a driveway next to that.
So it's not going away, it's not being buried?
No.
There's no way that thing will go away.
Yeah.
That'll stay.
That's there, yep.
Yep.
I mean, I am appreciative that it's four homes instead of five. I think they still feel so big sitting across from those four homes. The new houses that are up on the hill, you can't see those from any of the older houses. So, I mean, you can a little bit, but they're built into a hill, so they don't look huge. Like, I just feel like these are going to look ridiculous right here. But hoping they don't look as big as the drawing feels, and hopefully they can include some elements that don't make them feel so diverse from what's across the street. That's the other thing, the new homes up on the, on the curve don't have anything like right across the street. There's trees and things. So these will be literally sitting, kind of looking down on much smaller, older homes, which are beautiful. But, yeah, I guess I struggle with that a little bit. It has to happen, new houses are never going to look the same as old houses, I get that. They just feel really big on that end, and I hope they don't feel like that when they're there. So, yeah, any elements that can be added to make them feel a little bit more in place would be helpful. But I am appreciative that there is four houses instead of five. So thank you for listening to that. But I think, other than that, that's really my big feedback. That they just feel really big, especially two-story. I get why you can't put basements there, I think everybody expected that, but, yeah.
I completely agree, and the, you know, four houses versus five, it just fits a lot better there. So, you know, I think it's, it's a good change. And, you know, I think it'll be 5.5 greater. They're definitely a little bigger than the other houses in the neighborhood, but, you know, I think that's kind of where the market is.
Yeah.
So, you know, the people, you know, people want something, you know, a little bigger, a little more amenities. So, you know, seems appropriate. It's not super oversized, you know, compared to something that what could be built, but, which is good. So, you know, it seems like it's, you know, kind of ran that sweet spot for the market.
I concur with everything that's been said. I don't have anything to add, I'm sorry.
The only, I, I like, I mean, I like the four versus five. The house four, they're still, I don't know, I keep staring at it, wondering, I don't know what to do. It's just going to look, it sits further back. I worry about how close it is to the back house. Staring at four versus five, I can't believe we ever had five on that space, truthfully. Because to me, four, we're still kind of trying to shove in there a little bit, but I get it. I just, I don't know, I'm staring at it, trying to wonder what words to say. But it's, it's going to look different because it's going to sit back further compared to the house right next to it. I mean, I get why. Yeah, I echo the, the size piece. I struggle with this lot, this space in general, because I'd like to get some housing in that space, I get that. Is it the right type of housing, is it the right size of housing? That's the market, you know, we don't get to pick the developer that wants to, to do it, I get that. So the only other comment I will make, and I think we've stated this never-mary times, if the opportunity to have a non-official park in the city of Chaska exists, let's not put a city sign on the line.
Good suggestion.
Just state that. Because it, 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 it's. Just state that, because it caused a lot of confusion, right? I mean, I look at Google Maps and Street View, and that, it's there, right? And people are like, you know, that's the commentary that we're hearing, right?
Do you know why it happened?
I do, but it's like, it was never, I mean, as it says, it was never our city park, we never accounted for it.
I try and like spin it.
And we put a city sign on it.
It was literally my childhood park. I think people miss that, is like, quite literally was my childhood park. I would like, so many memories there. So I'm very attached to it, but what I've been trying to spin it is that I'm so grateful we had it for the years we did, and like, all that time, and I'm hopeful we can get a good park over for the east side. But I am grateful, like, I agree, let's try to avoid that, I forget, but I am grateful for the years we had it, it was a really nice park to have there and grow up with. So I've tried to like, change my perspective on that a little bit, because otherwise I give up. But also, oh, that's another thing, if you don't mind, I kind of like that the fourth house sits back a little bit, because I feel like it adds some depth and like, interesting.
See, I think it looks good.
I like, because I feel like then if it was just like a straight row of houses, I would have even more feelings about it. So I do feel like I kind of like that the fourth sits up back like that. I think what's hard is like, any house you're gonna build, you want a garage on it. Downtown Chaska houses don't have garages, and if they do, usually they're like at the back of the property, separate. So it is just like, you're gonna, so I think it's like, some of the architectural elements you can pull into it. I would less reference those four houses up out there and more try and pull in, if you can, obviously thinking less money, like, more references from the homes around it, not those new ones, because I just think that is, those, yeah, I think I've said enough on that.
I really think how they, how that blends into that, that's a sharp corner to build something on.
Yeah.
I think, I think this plan is a good plan. I've been just trying to find these highlights, they're not in any, they're not in a way.
Just, just that one, but it's in between two property lines.
No, not that one, I'm talking the big one.
That's the one.
Yeah, that's it.
That's the big one there.
Yeah, there's only one.
There's only one.
Yeah, and then there's one across the street on Sixth Street here.
What? Are you talking the one between, in the back, between the two hills? Or are you talking the big one?
The big one.
But where is it coming? I'm trying to remember how it comes from behind the school, or is it...
It comes from in front of the school, behind my old house.
Yeah, it...
So it comes down, comes down Maple?
More from the courthouse.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then it cuts up.
It crosses over the Creek Road.
I was just trying to remember where it turns, because my thought, thought it was going right over these houses, thinking we had, I've looked at that already, so, okay. That's why, I can't find it on these plans, that's why, because the other thing I was gonna mention is a lot of these trees probably would have came out during the street reconstruction anyways, so this really isn't, the trees aren't probably a bigger factor as we're putting into that, and they're gonna be, you know, just like we've done in all of our other street recon, you know.
There's gonna be a mixture of trees.
Yeah, we're gonna have a way healthier mix of trees, so, and ash borer's really taken off in the community in the last six months.
And I was really sad until they said maples. I do love a good maple, they're so pretty.
Well, we have lots of maples we're putting into our street programs.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, I'll comment, right, like, I was curious, because you look at this exhibit and see all those Xs, and you're like, oh my gosh, were those trees? And then you street view it on Google, and you look at the size of those trees, and you're just like...
There's one tree I'm sad about, but those just went in like a few years ago.
They're tiny, I mean, they are, and it's like, okay, it's not as scary as all those Xs on that sheet, on that...
But I do, before we, before we leave this, is just touch, two seconds on the history of that park. There was no park on the, on the east side of town. So I don't know how it came about, but the fire department built the park down by the courthouse, and that's how it became Fireman's Two. Firemen went in there, I know that we had help with, from the city, I was, I don't remember, I might still wouldn't, but, but the fire department put on the play structures in and did a lot of, did most of the work. And then when the courthouse expanded, they had that equipment, and I think it just was a handshake to come down into that area. And then it just got a sign on it, so you had a name for it, otherwise it's that park over there behind, you know, what you call it, Reece House, you know, but if you're not local, you wouldn't know that. So, but it's, yeah, so there's a little bit for anybody that's watching, that's kind of the history of how it became Fireman's Two there versus where it was, is that there was never a park. And then obviously, St. John's now is starting to expand quite a bit, so. What, oops, sorry.
I have one more question.
And I got one, and then you got it.
Oh, okay.
Whose container is that? There's that gone now. There was a big shipping container that sat on there, blue one. I was just trying to figure out whoever owned that, because I wouldn't see that we'd ever moved in.
It looks like the app, you have some insight on...
You have to come on up, or they can't hear. Thanks.
The blue one that's on a lot?
Name an address for our records.
Eugene, thirteen ninety-four Romeo Court. The blue one that's on a lot, that, that's my container.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Because our, one, is that legal to put it in there?
I mean, it's just temporary.
Do we allow shipping containers in there?
There you go.
Yeah, well, it's probably going away after this, I would assume.
Right, yep.
Okay.
I mean, and there's shipping containers right across the street from those other warehouses.
Yeah, I know, this is a tough, tough area to figure out.
Yeah, let's not get anyone started on that.
But yeah, now that we're putting houses there, that's gonna change, so.
While you're here, I don't know if it's been mowed lately, but some residents mentioned the mowing and the aggressive no trespassing signs. I get it, but they seem aggressive.
Okay.
But obviously, you can have what you want there. That was just a residence...
Right, because I took the park down, and I don't want people just to get hurt or anything.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. I guess my other question isn't necessarily for you, but just that hill there, that's along Sixth Street East with that first house, just making sure that that gets taken care of, I guess, that's an easy, when there's that much space, that's along the setback, making sure it gets mowed and such, it's kind of a steep hill, but...
Which house?
The first one.
Number one.
That's along Sixth Street East. With that hill there, like, that'd be easy to just like neglect, so hopefully, I mean, you can hope, but, um, I have a question. Maybe that's it. Yeah.
Anyone else? Like I said, I think that this is good use of the land that's there.
Oh, sorry. I did think of my other question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, did the neighbors have anything more to say? I don't see any neighbors. Did we hear from any more from the neighbors? I haven't heard from the neighbors, but...
We sent out our same notification as before, but, you know, we have not heard anything directly from them.
We'll take that as a positive thing, then.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just have one question. I know we kind of touched on St. John's and future park plans. I mean, is there any dates or any sort of con...
Yeah, I mean, prior to COVID, we were sort of moving, both moving down the, the plan of trying to get a concept together, and then everything just sort of stalled Yeah, so I mean, it's one that we just both have to just restart those discussions.
Yeah, because I mean, I look at this and think, you know, obviously, we've removed a part playground, or he's removed the playground, the developer, but also, if we're building a few new homes, more than likely, we're gonna have maybe more families moving in, it'd be good to restart that, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thoughts? Or is there someone who wants to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. Moves to adopt Resolution 2022-92, approving preliminary plat for Hidden Maples.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second, by Councilmember Gra, again, adopting Resolution 2022-92, approving preliminary plat for Hidden Maples. Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same side? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, moves us to seventy, adopt Resolution 2022-93 in ordinance ten eighteen, approving preliminary plat and rezoning of Club West eleven.
Mayor and Councilmember, this is the, this is the property that's often called Cusky Property, so coming down the hill from sort of the edge of the first part of the Harvest Neighborhood, going down towards Creek Road and down towards like the VFW. We did see the concept plan of this a couple months ago, and the Planning Commission did have a chance to review the preliminary plat and rezoning at their last meeting, and are recommending this for approval. And I'll turn over to Liz to go through the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have a preliminary plat and rezoning request this evening for Club West eleven, being proposed by Tradition Development. So Matt started to talk about the location of this. It's highlighted in yellow, which is the full piece as it exists today. They're really looking at kind of the western area of that, and it's located in southwest Chaska, right at the stub of Vista View Drive, where it turns into a temporary cul-de-sac. The Cusky Property does have access off of Creek Road, but this area adjacent is not in question this evening, and rather, it would come back at a later time. But other single-family development surrounds this property, and the proposal this evening would be consistent with that as well. So they're at the second step in the process, still another step to go, just in terms of previous approvals, kind of dates back several years, but kind of the more applicable approvals date back to 2014, when Club West's second addition was final-platted. At that time, it did show the extension in stub of Vista View Drive where it ends today. And then in 2015, Club West Third, which is the addition that's directly west of, and south of Vista View Drive, was also approved for their final plat. So again, the rear yards of that addition, but the one being proposed this evening. The developer did go through a neighborhood meeting during their concept plan process, which was on March twenty-third. They did have a number of people show up to that with concerns over a variety of pieces regarding the property. Then in May of 2022, they did get their concept plan approved in our process, so they're at the second step here. So they have a preliminary plat in front of us for nineteen single-family lots. They're also asking for a rezoning from the open zoning district to PRD sixty-two specifically for these lots, and that is the same zoning district that applies in the existing Club West neighborhoods, so just carrying that through with this addition here. The comprehensive plan guides this area for low-density residential and open space, and the proposed is consistent with that. Just in terms of the overall site and what's being looked at, the lot itself is approximately thirty-five acres total, however, they're only looking at about ten acres of that on the west side for the development. This area that they're developing is primarily vacant. There are wooded areas that are on the south side and north side that will be planned to be preserved in majority. The east side will be retained by the existing property owner, the Cusky family. They do use that currently for aggregate mining. At this stage in the process, though, they are in the reclamation process, so they're not excavating any additional material from this area, they're just bringing back in-material. So they have stated that it could be about five years or so that that operation would exist for. The outbuilding over there would also remain and be retained by the Cusky family. Again, the area that they're looking at is the west side there, it's approximately ten acres in size. Nineteen lots are shown, four will be on the north side of Vista View Drive and kind of follow suit with the ones that are existing west of the site, and then fifteen additional lots will come off of a new cul-de-sac extension from Vista View Drive. And again, these, the size of these lots are consistent with what's already in place in the previous additions of Club West. Related back to the eastern portion of the property and it being retained by the property owner, the, what we've been able to pull out of records and so forth, is they did have a conditional use permit with the county at the time that they were a part of Chaska Township. So when they got annexed into the city back in 2005, there was never a CUP put in place for the operation out there. So one of the things that will be having as a condition of approval is ensuring that there's a proper, a proper permit in place for the reclamation operation that's happening to the east there, which is contingent on that occurring prior to any building permit being pulled for the eleventh addition of Club West, so that that's in place before residents go out there, and if complaints are received, we have a document in place for that operation to occur with the city. The developer will also have their own disclosure language that they supply to anyone who buys out here, to inform them that there is a mining operation next door. With this Vista View Drive portion stubbing off on the eastern side of the ten-acre site, it does require them to put in a turnaround for fire purposes, so they are showing that turnaround on the east side there. We just have comments and concerns with how that works in terms of the layout. It meets the standards for a turnaround, however, it's shown, a portion of it is shown on private property here, so working through where that falls in terms of lot lines and so forth is one of the things that we want them to address for final. And then ultimately, when the eastern portion develops for the Cusky site, this road extension would follow all the way down to Creek Road and provide access to several more lots. That area would still have to come back for our three-step process to understand kind of how additional development can fit in. There are a couple areas of the site that can gain access into the ravine system, which is consistent with other areas of the Club West neighborhood or Tradition's neighborhood, where people can still provide or get access into the ravine system if they want to explore that. One could be from Outlot A, which will be owned by the city for ponding. They will have direct access into the ravine system there. There is another area on the south side here, which is kind of a double function of drainage and utility easement that they're showing on this plat, but one that we would ask to be incorporated into Outlot B, which is the overall ravine area, so that, that's a contiguous area all the way through. This is just the layout in terms of how the eastern portion could develop. They're showing eleven additional lots here. Again, they'll have to go through the full process to really understand how many lots can fit, and with the topography there, everything that needs to happen. So this is just more of an idea of how things can connect in the future. In terms of tree preservation, again, a majority of the trees on the site will be preserved with this plan. Twenty-six of them will have to be removed just due to grading provisions on the site, and a majority of those, I think, if not all of them, are mainly the ash elm, box elder, or cottonwood-type trees, so nothing that we would consider kind of that criteria for And this is just an overlay on an aerial, just to show how it fits into the existing fabric out there. There's a couple of comments on just ensuring that the screening is achieved on the areas that have kind of more of that porous opening adjacent to the eastern operations. Much of the site will be screened by existing vegetation, which is a plus, but there are some areas where filling in will be necessary. The product they're proposing is consistent with what they've done in other additions, so nothing significantly different than what we've seen before. So just a couple things to work on for final, achieving that screening from the eastern side of the property, for the properties that are more exposed. eastern side of the property for the properties that are more exposed, further evaluating that temporary turnaround location and ensuring it works with how we've done it in the past on other projects, and then working with the property owner on obtaining a conditional use permit for the reclamation operation on the east side. So in conclusion, we're asking you to make two motions this evening. One is to adopt Resolution Number 2022-93, which would be approving the preliminary plat for Club West 11, and then based on the conditions within that. And then a second motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1018, which is approving the rezoning from the open zoning district to PRD 62. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have the applicant in the audience as well.
Questions for Liz? Questions for Liz?
What would be a more amenable turnaround for emergency services? Like if it was round? We don't like the backing in?
It can be either or. I don't think we have a preference on that. I think we just have a preference on where it's located within.
Because the private property?
Yeah, exactly.
And it's not only for fire, it's for public works.
Yeah. I was just wondering if it was like the size, shape, or just strictly the private property part?
Yeah, it's that.
And that was just out of curiosity.
Because it keeps people out of private residence from turning around when they go down there. You've got to have some sort of a turnaround. I mean, it could be a hammerhead. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be. I don't know our, I mean, I'm just saying how it would work as well.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways of doing it, but I think, you know, they run into a topography issue on the east side there, so they have to work with that. So I think we can come to a conclusion on this that works for both.
Yeah, it's kind of like to that same point, I'm really appreciative of how they acknowledge the topography and like work with it, and so it's kind of like double-edged sword, is that I'm really appreciative of that same fact, so.
My question is more of a clarification, big picture. So this is part of the Harvest. Is my understanding, and this is where I need clarification, and I'm not sure who will have the answer to this question, that's why I'm asking it, has that Harvest Association been turned over to individuals, or is it because they keep adding houses to it that it hasn't hit the threshold? Do we know that answer?
We don't, but it would be a good answer or a good question for the developer to maybe provide some clarity on that.
That's why I asked. Let me give you the context as you're thinking about that. The context, I've had, I live right across the street in Founders Way, and I've, things have popped up with association-related things, and they've come to me because it's the city and it's like it's more of an association thing. And I was, I'll be honest, I was surprised to hear, and maybe that's typical, but I'm surprised to hear that it hasn't been turned over to like resident-run yet because, but and they explained it, right? It was because, well, you keep adding, and so it doesn't hit the house threshold. And I just, that's curious to me, because I think some of the stuff, some of those neighbors are pretty mature neighbors. They've been there a while, and so not saying that whoever's running the association can't do a good job, but I just was curious about that. Do you know if that's true? I mean, I'm just, I hear what people tell me, and I'm just curious if that's true, that it's not a neighborhood-run association, yet it's still the builder, I guess, is how I think it is set up.
Mayor and council, Pat Rossi, Tradition Development. I'll start by saying I'm not the HOA expert within our company, but I believe the turnover percentage where you're mandated to go and turn it over to residents, I believe it's 70% filled out. So I don't believe the Harvest has been turned over yet. I know that it should be soon. There's been quite a lot of activity out there, and we've got to be close to that 70%. I don't know where we're at, and I know that we've added some other builders' developments into the association. I think DDK and their townhome, and on the east side wanted to come in for the enhanced services there, but I think it's 70%. I can check into that and obviously get back at final plat.
Is that 70% a city ordinance?
No, it's a state, state rule. The, I can tell you that it's, a lot of times will depend on the developer going through. So for instance, like in my neighborhood with Sagewood, so there was a Phase 1 Sagewood, and then there was a Phase 2 Sagewood, and they could have waited for Sage, Stage 3 Phasewood before they'd hit that 70%, but they didn't know exactly when that was going to happen, so then they made the decision to have the 70% capped off after the second phase. And so, you know, it can be determined differently on different developments based on when they sort of consider the end of that development. But the 70% is by state statute.
And I would, again, I would assume that a builder would want to turn that over faster than they would not want to turn over, just because.
Not necessarily.
Okay, well, because I'm asking just because I think, like, that's some of the question, like, if you continue, and you're, we are running out of space out there, it's quickly developing, but I think it's just education for me and sharing with the council, because I think that's some of the feedback that I've heard from across the streets. They're coming and asking me questions about things that are really association-related, and unfortunately, it's neighbor, it's against neighbor stuff, and it's cake in the city health, and I was just surprised because some of that, what the benefit, in my opinion, of having your neighborhood association represented by the people living there per se is that you have a, you know, the people who are living there have some of that influence.
Right, so.
Again, it's nothing related to directly to this property, other than its addition, so I was just looking for clarification.
We do have a, you know, professional homeowners association that manages this development.
And that's fine, I just like said, I was surprised, I guess, again, I was surprised to hear that it had not done yet.
Sure.
It makes sense when you look at the numbers, everything like that.
See, I would have thought it was already turned over.
Yeah, exactly. I was like, really? And so, you know, again, it's not related to this, it hasn't, it was just an opportunity because you were, I figured someone would know the answer to my question.
Well, I'll find out for you by final plat where we're at in terms of take down on the number of lots and if there's a plan for transition to the homeowners.
You can get it to mirnat, and then we'll get it up to them.
Okay, sounds good.
As long as you're here, why don't you state, have you had any conversations with the Cuskeys? Is it possible to bring your construction up from the bottom? He's already laughing.
Well.
He probably asked this last time, but I was just curious if, I mean, you can easily bring your construction equipment up that way, but I don't know the relationship between you and Cusky.
Well, we have a good relationship with Jason Cusky there. I haven't talked with him about that subject, but as you heard in the presentation, I need to work with him to get a conditional use permit set up within the city here for his mining. So I have a emailing to him from last week. We're going to be following up on that this week, make a plan. Liz is supposed to get in to see you about that, and I will ask him about the possibility of coming in.
I just know, that's, even though there's nobody here, that's usually the biggest thing, you know, and I get it, because that construction company, that equipment moves in and then it's there until it moves out, so.
Right.
It's not the end of the world, but I thought I'd ask the question.
I recall that question from last time, and when we talked here a few months ago, I wasn't sure about the volumes of dirt and what type of equipment, but that's been verified now. I think all-in, we're pushing 40,000 yards of dirt around, so the big off-road trucks are going to be coming in, so it's a good question, and I'll follow up to see if that's a possibility.
I mean, seeing it's always kind of been a little bit of a construction road anyways, you know, that it would just work out nice if it worked. If it doesn't, I guess it doesn't, you know.
We'll see what we can put together there.
Perfect. Awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else, questions? What's your thoughts? We have two items here. We're going to follow them right in the way they are on our agenda, so we would start with the overall preliminary plat and rezoning, or preliminary plat for Club West.
So I guess I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-93 for, and yeah, just 2022-93 for approving the preliminary plat.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilmember Law.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Again, that's adopting Resolution 2022-93, which is approved in preliminary plat. Discussion.
I just wanted to comment, because I sometimes point this out in other development plans, so I want to like point this out as a plus. I do like the fact, like, the house count, because you always get critiqued on house count, how many houses, you know, it aligns with the adjacent houses, right? Backyards line up nice. I just want to comment on that. I appreciate that, because that's, you know, sometimes you got one house and you're looking at two houses in your backyard because of issues, so I typically critique that in others, so I wanted us to take the opportunity to point that out, that I do appreciate the way they've laid in there, and basically your lots are kind of back-to-back, like it was planned together on the previous side, so I thank you for that.
Totally agree. Good point. All right, anything else? We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now we're going to take care of a motion to adopt Ordinance 1018 approving the rezoning from open to planned residential District 62. So I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Grau, second by Councilmember Radfield. Again, this is Ordinance 1018 approving rezoning from open to PRD 62. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. And now we move to 7E, adopt Resolution 2022-94 approving concept plan for structures.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is one that you have seen coming, this site is one that you've seen come in front of you before, looking and approving basically one building, light industrial building on this site off of Old Audubon. Since that time, the developer has done more in-depth soils work on the site and found that doing one big building there is probably not economically feasible because of the sales conditions, and so is relooking at this site as three separate buildings done there. So this is just a concept plan at this point. Did go through the Planning Commission recommendation for approval, and Liz is here to give the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We have a concept plan in front of you for Structures Incorporated, being proposed by the property owner, Jeremy Benkin. The property in question is highlighted in blue on this aerial exhibit. It's located kind of in the southeastern portion of the city. It's right off of Old Audubon Road, adjacent to existing industrial properties. You do have a single-family and townhomes just to the immediate south there. Revo Road is on the west side, and Arbor Drive, which is a private drive that the industrial site's accessed from, would be the point of access for this site. Just a couple of views into the site. It's currently an agricultural piece of property, and that's how it's been used over time. This site does date back several years as a part of different plat back in 1997. The East Creek Carriage Homes were approved, and Outlot A was approved at that time, which was this tract of land. So it was anticipated during that time that that would be, this property would be for future industrial north of the high line that's out there. And as Matt mentioned, it did come forward for a couple approvals with the city for a different concept, which dates back to 2018 is when they originally came through for their concept plan for one building on the site, and then they came back in 2019 in April for their preliminary site and building plan, pre-plat and rezoning. So the rezoning did occur with this site, so it's currently zoned a planned industrial district, PID 9, to be exact. And then once they got those approvals is when they did the soil testing and did determine that there were significant poor soils on the property. So they did come back in May of 2020 for a revised pre-site and building plan to reorient the building to the west side of the property to try to avoid more of the significant poor soils on the property, even though it's all over, more of the significant poor soils were on the east side. And again, even after those approvals, they did come to a conclusion that their project was financially burdensome, just with the type of construction that they would need to do in order to have that size of building and make it work on the site with the poor soils. So they have been looking at it for quite some time, since 2020, in terms of how they can develop the site, so that's why we're seeing a revised concept this evening for three separate smaller buildings and lots, which would get away from the atypical foundation systems that really create that economic burden on the property. This is the previous preliminary plan with the one building, where they last left off with the one building concept was on the west side there, coming off of Arbor Drive. There was plans for exterior storage and then parking along the front there. So effectively, what they're coming back with is kind of the same use, except it's split into three different parcels and buildings and areas for exterior storage. So the property that they have is 5.25 acres approximately in size. There is a holding pond on the south side, which is within kind of that easement area where there is a transmission line that flanks the southern portion of the site. So within that transmission line, there is an easement that exists within 125 feet of that southern property line. Noted with this plan that they're moving forward with is they do plan to encroach into that easement area. It is maintained or managed by Excel Energy, so they have been in conversations with Excel in terms of their plan. Excel is favorable of the direction that they're going in terms of allowing parking and landscaping and fencing that they're showing there. They're not proposing their building within that area. They have double street furniture. Back when they got their previous approvals, there was a regulation with the zoning put in place that no additional vehicle access can come off of Revo Road, so they're showing the one access off of Old Audubon Road here on Arbor Drive, which again is that private shared access. So the concept plan is again for the construction of three new buildings and lots. Two of those lots are shown to have exterior storage as well, so again, the use is the same, if not similar, to what was previously proposed before. They did show two separate concepts just to get additional feedback for this site. They want to kind of use that into their next step. They didn't want to define it too much into one site plan, since they've gone through a lot of different iterations out here. They were really trying to get as much feedback that they could on these two concepts that they put forward. Concept A shows the access off of that shared access on Arbor Drive, and then shared access would occur across this middle lot to access both of the lots on the edges. The buildings shown here are roughly 4,500 to 5,600 square feet in size. The buildings are more oriented to the edges of the sides that abut the streets, and then you have the outdoor storage areas in blue here, kind of to the south of those buildings. And then along the south side here, which is the same with Concept B, is that they'll do privacy fencing and landscaping and a level of birmingham on the south where possible to really help dress up that edge from the adjacent residential. Concept B is kind of the buildings opposite of each other from Concept A, so the buildings are pushed more internally, and then the outdoor storage is kind of oriented more towards the street side, and then parking kind of in between. Like the first concept, there's shared access off of Arbor Drive, and then each lot would have to go through the middle lot to access their sites. And then landscaping and privacy fencing is shown on the south side here as well. So as we evaluated just some best practice design in terms of site planning, we just mentioned a couple of things that are more appealing, such as the buildings being oriented more to the street side with exterior storage oriented towards the center of the site so that it's effectively better screened. screened. Having wider separation from the residential is also more appealing. Having more green space where possible is also more appealing. And where circulation exists on the site, having kind of that smooth traffic flow is also more appealing. So having drive aisles that don't have parking stalls off of it tends to be the, the smoother traffic flow through the site, which you see more so in concept A. And with that, concept A appears to meet kind of those best design practices that we've kind of highlighted in our analysis. There's obviously areas that they can still improve on, and we've provided that in our report as well. Planning Commission, when they reviewed this, they did make a recommendation that they pervert concept A over concept B. And just working on the conditions of approval and other site planning pieces with that as well. The building design, what they're proposing would be similar to what has been previously approved out here. So this was the old plan on the site when it was one building, but effectively they would kind of bring in the same type of design that they initially planned out for this site and have a contiguous or cohesive design through all three buildings.
Can you back up for a second?
Yeah.
On, on this, I understand this was a previous concept. There was that higher space to the right there.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is that still needed? And if that is, which one of the buildings?
Because that was their mechanic's area.
Yeah.
And they would still have that in all three buildings. They would have a level of office and then the shop warehouse space. So we'll probably see that, but just at a smaller scale on all three buildings. This is just a colorized version of concept A, if we need to refer back to that, just to get a better view of how it lays out adjacent to residential. So what they proposed before, and again, they'll have to provide details on this in the next semitals they have, but having a level of glass, maybe some masonry, cedar to bring in some warmness or coloring to the building. Architectural paneling was also shown before. So again, they'll have to meet our requirements for industrial buildings out there. But with that, they'll have some things to work on just with the site planning and green space and making sure that the site really flows together well and orienting the buildings and the exterior storage effective or appropriately onsite are some of the things that they'll have to work on. So we are asking you to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-four, which is approving the concept plan for Structures Incorporated. And then, based on the conditions that are listed within that. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant here as well.
Questions?
Nice to see this back. I was just thinking about that area when I drove by it the other day. And I was like, what happened to structures? Anyways, I know one of the things before was really because lot one and three sit closer to the roads and even some of the other industrial back there, just if those could somehow, some element of blending as it moves into residential. I know that was a big plus of the previous building, and I totally understand why it needs to change, but having some element on those two lots. And then, I think on the previous one, the residents that would be sitting on the other side of the pond and such, were looking at fencing anyways, weren't they? So it's, it's kind of similar, and if not even somewhat better for the residents that are to whatever direction that is, where all the trees are. Right? There was fence there before?
Yeah. They, they showed fencing primarily kind of on the storage yard area with the landscaping around it. This, you know, bringing the fencing a little bit closer to the edge kind of helps with sightlines a little bit better.
Yeah.
I think we'll just need to understand that kind of in the preliminary. And
Right.
With the storage area, you know, more internal, we'll also want that defined via fencing. I think there's still a question of, you know, how do the two fencing elements kind of work together or against each other? So I think there's, there's things to evaluate that we don't.
Yeah.
See right now.
Continuing to make sure there's some sort of visual, since there are houses so close there.
Right.
Even like this image, you can't tell how close. They just sit so close there. But I think, you know, with the previous plan, and it looks like this one, there is very much an attempt to do that. So I think that's good.
I think, Mayor Liz, you said that there was at least one resident that came to the planning commission meeting and actually said that they liked this plan better.
Yeah, that's what I kind of felt like, too, is as long as those outdoor storage areas don't get too crazy with any, like, this almost is better. So I think that it, yeah, as long as the ones that, especially lot three, I feel like sits really close to Old Audubon, which is fine, but then kind of like that visual transition, whereas the industrial to the north of it sits further back and kind of down. So just making sure that, which it looks like they will, and they have done that before, so.
Nice thing about this, about option A here is that it has different layers of screening for the residents, right? You have like the trees, there's a privacy screen, there's a roadway, and then there's security fencing before the yard. So it's not just like it's one thing, it's like multiple layers there. And I think it's, you know, and of course the Birmingham too, which is really good, because, you know, not a lot of, you know, developments we have really kind of have those multiple layers like this. So this is really, you know, is for industrial, it's very thoughtful. And also, just wanted to comment, thank you very much for, you know, providing multiple options, because I think it's not often we, you know, you get a choice. So it's nice that you, you went out to take the effort to do that. And, you know, that's very much appreciated, because I think it gives staff and residents, you know, a sense that, you know, hey, you want to be part of the community, that you want to be a good neighbor. And so I think that's a really, a really strong message. And that's something that very much is appreciated. So thank you. Overall, overall, I really like the, the, the concepts here. One question, is there any intent in the future to sell off parts of it, or just because they're plotted to three separate lots?
As of right now, our intent is to develop coming from the west and the east.
Yeah.
And to keep, present to keep the three lots.
Yeah, but to continue to own and operate it as three separate lots.
That's our intent right now.
So, so is there a reason why you'd want to platter them as three separate lots rather than as this contiguous lot with three separate buildings? Or is there something driving that?
Well, I think down the road, at some point, they'd probably be sold, you know, because it's, it's an inventory that's really good for smaller contractors. You know, there's not a lot of this in here. You know, we got fortunate that even though we own a lot of really bad dirt, it would be great for a city park. It's on the east side.
[laughing]
That, that we were fortunate that when we ran into the problems with the soils on this, we went to leasing building, but we were able to buy it from Berg Drywall. You know, so we actually ended up with twenty thousand square foot building instead of the twelve to fifteen we're proposing here for less than what it was going to cost us to develop this.
Oh, okay.
So, but we own the land, so we want to do something with it. We've spent the better part of the last three years chicken scratching over and over and over, trying to find a product that would fit on here that we thought would be good for the community and that would have, be viable.
So, so in terms of the original intent was for you guys to have your home base here, right?
The original drawings that she showed, yes, correct.
Right. And then, it's, you know, because of soils, things didn't work out, you end up finding a space in between. So you actually now have a new home that's not here. But then you want to continue to develop the property as something viable. Got it.
Correct. Yep. We're on the other side of Chaska by Rich County.
Okay. So, and do appreciate that, A, you stayed in town, and that, you know, developing this type of product is really something that is really good for the community, too. So that's, you know, as you mentioned, yes, definitely something that's really well needed. So, yeah, it's really exciting.
Where, where did you say you're at?
You know, the Berg Drywall building, yes.
Yep, Alpha Forty-One?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
We own that now, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, awesome.
Yeah.
I, I, I like Councilmember Hatfield, I was, drove by there, I thought, I wonder what happened to that. So I, I am really happy to see something come forward on this, because I, I think it'd be just a nice fill in there. And I, I like your idea that if you do decide to sell off, you have the ability to make the three separate things like that. And you're right, there, there are a lot of small contractors looking for that. We actually have a proposal for.
Actually, there's at least two contractors I know that would be very interested in this.
Yeah. So, thanks for keep chicken scratching and finding something. Sometimes chicken scratching works. Apparently it did here.
Yeah, I agree. I think the three proposed buildings versus one mega building, you just get a lot more variety. I don't know.
Mega building, I thought was funny.
No, it just.
Well, it just fits into there with the.
And it fits the small, small business, you know, frame of mind. That's probably intention for the space. I would say, I mean, the layout, I didn't have any hard-pressed feelings between A or B, but it sounds like B maybe is just a little bit, flows a little bit better, and a little bit better for the neighbors. I would say.
B or A?
A. Did I say B?
Yeah.
I meant A. I'm sorry. Um, A, I would say just to make sure, especially we're on the, on the left side there, the west side, just the screening with the, with the houses that about that, just making sure that that's done thoroughly.
You can't really tell, but there's houses that really come close.
Car headlights and, and things along, along those lines with the parking. So that would just be my one feedback concern. But otherwise.
Oh, I have one more question. This would still be accessed just from Old Audubon. There wouldn't be a Revo access.
Right.
Okay. I missed that. Sorry about that.
So, so does this have to be replotted then for three lots? Was it always three? I don't remember.
Yeah, it has to be plotted to be.
It has to be replotted?
Yeah.
That doesn't, that's not arguable, right?
No, it is.
Yeah.
It'll be a second step.
So it'd be part of preliminary.
Yeah.
Are, so if you sold this off with the sole access, you're okay with them all?
There'll be agreements in place, just like we have an agreement. There's a current agreement for old, entrance in Audubon with the, the two neighbors, that we have an agreement there. So we'd have another agreement written inside of our property for the three lots.
I just, yeah, because with that one access. Okay, good. Good, good. All right. Anything else?
One last question. The maintenance, so there's like the birmingham of the trees on the south side. Would each of the different property owners be responsible for that? Would that be a shared maintenance of those?
I think that's to be determined still.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Final questions? If not, I'd look for some sort of motion on twenty twenty-two dash ninety-four.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Again, resolution twenty twenty-two dash ninety-four, that's a concept plan for structures. So we're gonna touch it a few more times yet, so fine tuning. So, all right, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. That is the end of action items in lieu of bill. We don't have a question on the bill.
One question. This is page eight. So it was page eight where you had the fuel price, you know, the fuel purchase. But this is more of a general question around fuel purchases. You know, so given the volatility of fuel these days, and you're right now, you know, kind of coming down from some record highs, are we, you know, because I know we buy, tend to buy in bulk at like, you know, once or twice a year. Have we changed our strategy kind of knowing, you know, that, you know, given what the situation is these days?
We've actually performed pretty well. So we do buy in bulk, and we get like diesel for four eighty a gallon, which is seventy cents less than what you can purchase at the station. And we get unleaded for three sixty-three a gallon, which is about seventy to ninety percent less. We have looked at other vendors, because there can be savings, but a big, probably a bigger issue for us is can they provide the supply? And so, it's always a balance between, you know, yeah, you might get the savings, but we, but supply is just as important. And we've had really good luck with this particular wholesaler of, of electric, or of gas, you know, because they've been able to, never been an issue of providing the supply. And we've had really good results with their actual pricing. So it may not be the lowest we can get, but it's also balancing it with predictability, too.
Right. So they've been pretty, pretty stable in terms of their pricing as well?
Yep.
Okay. Got it.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong, second by?
Second.
By Councilmember Hatfield to pay the bills. Discussion. At least we call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Grau?
Yes.
Mayor Winchell?
Yes.
Pretty aggressive.
He was questioning how I say, how I answer, so I, so he was happy with that.
In your absence, two weeks ago, I kept your tradition of saying aye instead of yes, in your absence.
Roll call, whether yes or no, but that's just.
And then, the mayor followed with aye, too. And I pointed out that I noticed that typically he follows the voice that follows him and says that. So that's, that's the story.
John's been a joke.
Moving right along, we move into other business. Speaking of Councilmember Row, you're up.
Oh, yeah.
You're up. What did I say? Flashback, yeah.
It was at the spot?
See?
No, it wasn't the spot.
You got it.
You know, I think it's, I think we'll all probably talk Wolf Fire and Ice. I just, it was just good to see people and energy in the park live again. I wasn't down there in full honesty as much as I would like, because I was running around baseball games with my, both my boys. I had eight baseball games in three days. And, but my mom visited from out of town, so it was exciting to take her down to eat and kind of see the liveliness of the park and the music. And I enjoyed the fireworks from my house, actually, perfectly between two houses, which is great. So it's just, yeah, just well-run. You know, I love, I love the orange shirts that stick out for volunteers and our staff and everyone down there. You know, the fire department helps. Police puts a lot of time in to be down there. You know, a lot goes in to make that thing seamless in, what, how many years?
Two thousand sixteen was our first year, so that was our sixth, sixth event.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's awesome.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
I think we.
Seven.
Did we skip twenty twenty?
I think we skipped one year.
I think twenty twenty did get skipped.
We postponed twenty twenty-one, but we skipped twenty twenty.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, it would be six then. Yeah.
So you're right, it was six the first time, you should say.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I.
Yeah, I said six, and you guys said I was wrong.
I meant there should be one last.
Yeah, I just, I mean, like, you look at what that event's turned into, and it's just, it's a gathering. And, you know, I looked, you know, I look at your report of all the stuff that's going on in downtown and in the city of Chaska. Just exciting. It was just fun to see, you know, lots of people and gathering. And it was hot, but that didn't deter people, right? And I, the fireworks were, were great. I don't really have anything else. It's a short turnaround between meetings, so.
Right. Mr. Wong?
All right. So, since I wasn't here the last meeting, I'd like to offer a congratulations and welcome to our newly sworn in officers, the Chaska PD, Ashley Kane Zafki, Officer Nadeau, and Officer Zachman, who are sworn in June twenty-seventh. So welcome, welcome to the team. And certainly, thank you for your service and look forward to seeing you around town. Fire and Ice, it was a great turnout. Really, really excited to see like all the people down there and see all the activities. You know, it's one of those events that, you know, City does such a great job, you know, all the, you know, park and rec and police and, you know, every, all the, the facilities people who like really, you know, just helped to put this together. And there's a lot of work that goes on, you know, inside and outside of the facilities of the park. And, you know, just to see it all come together, see such a fantastic turnout. The weather is fantastic, which obviously we don't have any control over. Like, we don't, right? No.
Yeah, we do.
We do, okay. Yeah, so, maybe we have some control. The weather was fantastic. So great. It was out, great out there. So, you know, absolutely fantastic to see. So, thanks for everyone who came down, enjoyed the music, and, you know, and the, all the fun, food and activities. So, upcoming events, we have the picnic with police this Thursday. This is at Veterans Park. Did you steal someone's thunder?
No, no.
No, I forgot about it.
Yep.
I gotta get it on my calendar.
Just hearing feedback next to me.
So it's at five thirty to eight thirty PM, if you'd like to get in your calendar.
Alone.
Yeah, it was.
At Veterans Park. And there's gonna be a free dinner raffle and drawings, so encourage people to come down. Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, Bark in the Park, which is gonna be at Fireman's Park at six PM. Uh, Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, Bark in the Park, which is, um, gonna be at Fireman's Park at six P M. And then there's River City Days, which is coming up on the end of the month on July twenty-ninth. So at City Square Park, so that's, uh, another big one. That's an annual event. And then, uh, beginning of August, on August second, Night to Unite. So that's, uh, you know, certainly, but if you haven't got that on your calendar and haven't, haven't started organizing anything, your neighborhood is not too late. Uh, Officer Jenke and the Chaska PD are coordinating that, so, um, that's something that I would look forward to. Um, one question is that, you know, is it possible to ride along with you guys for like, you know, for some to see, drop by some of the different neighborhood events? Or is it something that?
Yeah, no, we can, uh, I think would be easiest is if people, if, if you guys could just email if you're interested in that, and then we can get people assigned.
Okay, that sounds great. So I will drop you a note. Um, and then, you know, of course, Touch a Truck is August eighteenth, um, so it's next month, about a month out. Um, that's from five to seven, the community center, and then the twenty-eighth Art, Art in the Park at Fireman's Park. Um, so the other thing is that I saw that there was an article in, in the Herald about the Chaska PD Smile Program, which is kind of cool. So that's the kind of neat program with sort of a voluntary, you know, registration of, um, of cameras. So if you have like a, a camera that sees outside, there's a crime, the Chaska PD know, hey, you know, they're willing to share information or at least, you know, to talk about like, this is what my camera may have captured if there's something going on. So great program and it's great because it's also voluntary too. So people are just, you know, offering up their, uh, cameras. So if you're interested in that, I think there's a link that was in the Chaska Herald. You can just call the Chaska PD and they'll get you connected with that. Also want to offer my congratulations to the city for being ranked number forty-six in Star Trips Best Places to Work. So again, great honor to be there, even the, you know, to be on the top fifty list. So that's like really, really huge. I know it does, it helps us a lot with recruiting, but more importantly, it shows what a great job that, you know, that, um, that you've done as, you know, from a leadership perspective and as a city, you know, putting together like really, really fundamentally good culture within the city to that people are, you know, people feel that they have a place that they enjoy being, that they feel like, you know, they can contribute and feel like they're valued. So I think that's, you know, speaks a lot about the culture within the city.
To me, what's been real, and I had mentioned this before, but the thing to me that's great about that program is it creates us, uh, uh, annual feedback survey that our employees provide to us. So beyond just where you rank in the program, I mean, every year we come up with things within each department. It's like, huh, we didn't know that. That's, that's good to know. And it, you know, helps us look differently at how we might look in each department and maybe changing things up. And maybe there's things that people don't like that it's like, oh, that's maybe not that difficult or, or it's good for us to know. So I like the survey component of it. Obviously, it is good for recruiting, but, um, I think the most practical aspect of it is within the organization.
Yeah, because I know that we've, even the company I work for, we've done like pulse surveys and then we also do this in addition to that. And they can yield somewhat different results. And I think it's good because it gives us different perspectives on things we could do to improve that employee experience. Um, and make sure that, you know, we're, there's things we're not missing, because there's certainly things that are covered with this particular survey that we don't necessarily cover with our pulse survey and vice versa. So, you know, so it's a great program. So I think it's good, and it's good to see that we're, you know, yielding, you know, positive results in terms of how we rank as among other organizations too.
One thing that we're, that's sort of included in this year's survey that we're, actually, I think it's Thursday is the first day we're sort of taking a look at the results of this is, uh, they started getting more into sort of the diversity and, uh, uh, sort of the D E I sort of stuff within the organization and getting people's feedback within the organization on that. So, um, I forget exactly what the program's called, but we're meeting with them on Thursday. That's sort of a new component of this survey tool that didn't exist before that does now. So I, I'm sort of excited to see how that works still.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see the results from that, because I know that it's something that's very, it's often a difficult thing to measure, right? So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see. Good stuff. Um, then also I saw that the opening for the loop got pushed back to twenty twenty-three, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it's, what, what we've been saying is if things are ready, we, we would always be in a position open. We just want to be realistic based on the earth, on the real tough growing season in the spring, that it just may not be possible to do it. Um, I will say now it's been good growing since, you know, since it's got so hot. Um, but the one thing we don't want to do is get people in the grass too early and then, you know, risk damaging it, uh, going out too early. But we're sort of keeping our eye on it.
So does that mean that we, was, would the, would, because I know we still have to build a clubhouse out there.
Yeah, so regardless, the clubhouse, we would, uh, were recommending that we build over the winter time, uh, including the maintenance facility. If we were to open up early, we'd bring in a trailer. And the reason for that is we did go out for pricing on, uh, for bids on the, the clubhouse and sort of the current building environment. It was way more expensive than what it should be. And so we got feedback from contractors is if you can do it in the winter, do it in the winter. And so that's, that's what we're gonna end up doing.
Would you be able to do the foundations and foundations, or would you actually just maybe do those early, let it sit and then do the construct, rest of the construction?
It's a small enough building where we can really do sort of all that, um, at once. And it's not going to take long to construct. Our goal then would then be to have that open, uh, the maintenance and the, uh, and the clubhouse when we open up in the spring.
Okay, cool.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um.
I think we can't lie to a question.
No, I know. I just get really distracted. I just had to do that. I just like, I'm occasionally like a child and that was very childlike.
All right.
So, so Saturday morning, um, I had the opportunity to see, um, Chaska's first responders in action. Because I was bringing my son to karate lessons over at, um, the National Karate off of the old Chaska Boulevard across by where the Caliber Collision and O'Reilly Auto Parts is down in that part of south, that part of southern part of Chaska. Yeah, so. And, um, then we drove by the salon and noticed like, hey, it looked like there was an accident here last night. Little did I know the accident was like five minutes before I got there, because like I was just thinking, no one cleaned it up. But apparently the driver was still in the car, tucked away in the back of the salon. And, um, so, you know, then, you know, I said, someone called nine one ones? I don't know, maybe someone has, someone hasn't. So I called nine one one. And I think someone probably beat me to the punch, but then I think, uh, you know, Officer Gibbons here, who was actually one of the first people to show up, was, uh, arrived and followed by another officer in Task of Fire. So, um, I saw our new chief out there and also our assistant chief, um, Chief Bon, uh, Assistant Chief Bonema and, um, and the rest of the gang like all show up. So, um, it was, you know, kind of exciting to see them all in action, like, you know, responding there. Also, uh, Ridgey showed up there with, uh, just a couple of minutes later. I, you know, as I recall, and just correct me if I missed anything, you know, they, you know, checked out the driver was still in the vehicle. Uh, they were pretty shaken up and, you know, but they were, they got them out, got her out of the car, made sure she was okay. And, you know, kind of took care of her. But it was really, it was good to see the professionalism. Everyone was, you know, punctual, you know, did all the right things. It was, uh, really great to see, you know, them like, you know, doing what they do best and did a great job there. So, um, it's not often a chance in, you know, to get a chance to see them in action, um, without actually like losing a load of like stuff on forty-one.
I'm glad you brought that up.
I forgot to put, I put that out there, but.
I think you responded to that one too.
Whenever something happens, you're always out there for me. But, you know, anyway, it was, um, it was good to see every, good to see, and also to see that there was this particular event, no one was injured. Fortunately, the salon wasn't open. There was no one in the salon, so no one got hurt, which is about the best thing you can have if there was an accident. So, um, there was, you know, property damage, but, you know, I'm sure insurance will take care of that. And also the one thing that did come up that I was talking to some neighbors, because I'll be hosting a, a neighborhood watch meeting tomorrow at my house. For my, for my own neighborhood. Um, one thing is, a couple of my neighbors and I were talking about was that, you know, we often have like this update like once a year. But then I know that we as council get asked things throughout the course of the year. And wondering, you know, guessing it may, may also be something that we'd like to probably get updates like maybe like, maybe quarterly or something like that to see kind of like, what are some of the trends? What are we seeing? Because it's kind of, you know, difficult to answer questions if like.
You're talking about public safety?
Yeah, yeah, public safety updates. You know, just because it's difficult to answer questions in the public if we're only finding out like once a year or something really big happens. But I know that there's things that come up and we get asked.
Well, he has that app though now, right?
Yeah, but it's, but even more than just like, you know, just that, it's not just the drill down to have to look for something, but hey, you know, what are some of the trends that we're seeing or what do you, you know, what are things that we're planning? What's the new programs, new initiatives, whatever?
Sure.
Just more from our, you know, our level, so that way we can provide that, you know, be almost more knowledgeable when residents ask.
Okay.
So that is all I have. So, but thank you guys for, you know, doing a great job as always.
All right.
Much appreciated.
You're up.
Yay. No, I don't have a little lot. Um, Fire and Ice, I know we've all talked about, we were all there. But, uh, I'll give my personal take on it. Um, no, it was a great event. Like, you know, like echo the statement that the weather was perfect. But also it was just, you know, I, I didn't serve on the council, but the envisionment, I'm sure of that park kind of comes into fruition when you see an event like that happen, because, you know, you look and you see all the different entities of that park. You see people paddling in the little clay hole lake. You see swimmers swimming, little kids running through the splash pad, playing on the playground, the music going, different food vendors, um, the curling inside the facility, a restaurant that, that had like open seating for those that wanted to sit down and eat in a restaurant. I mean, it had it all. And, uh, you know, parking was, you know, pretty readily available, at least my, my personal opinion, I guess I can attest for others' thoughts and opinions on that. But, um, I just thought it was really well done. I want to thank everybody involved in the planning. Parks and Rec, who was there, you know, you saw them, like you said, in the bright orange shirts, the police that were there to, um, you know, just, um, patrol. And, um, the fireworks, they were, they were amazing. They were.
That was Elise.
That was all, congratulations, Elise. That was amazing. I know a lot of people joked and said they were like the makeup for, you know, the Fourth of July and everything. But I, I, the second night, as I was standing there in our little V I P spot, uh, which is just right next to forty-one. Um, I, I literally almost had like tears in my eyes at that finale. Like, it was just amazing. Anyways, uh, I just want to thank everybody that put all the time and energy, all the unsung heroes on that event, so.
You know, the ones I always get overlooked, but is the Public Works Department and that, that park. I, I was sitting there on Thursday morning at Rotary when they were sort of doing sort of the finishing touches of the park to be ready for that event. Oh, my God. That, that park is beautiful. And the garden, how it's come in over, you know, between the concession and the event center and just the condition of the grass. And I, I think Mark, you had made the comment that somebody said our grass felt like carpet, uh, out there. I mean, it's.
They asked me how, how do we do that? How do we make the grass so nice and like carpet?
Yeah, I, and, you know, having been involved in the Bonds Bill itself, I get to hear the comments from all the people who are, are part of the Bonds Bill. And, you know, keep in mind that I think it's thirty percent of our players are coming from outside of the state.
Yeah, I mean, we have people from Scotland.
Yeah, we had a team from Scotland. We had two from Canada. We had Tulsa, Pittsburgh.
Newark and California.
San Francisco, um, and all over the country. And all of them love to come to this event, uh, because they, you know, they said, this, I mean, it's well beyond anything you experience in any other Bonds Bill anywhere, where not only do you have the Bonds Bill, which is fun in and, in and of itself, but then you go outside and you have this huge community celebration, which they look in there like, oh, my God, what a cool community. Um, so it's, it's really fun to hear the perspective of the people who come from out of state and out of country. That the guys from Scotland, uh, actually, there's three guys and one woman that from Scotland said that they were just flabbergasted at, uh, you know, you know, Chaska and just the, just what we put on there and the quality of curling facility. Their curling facility, uh, they had a, a patch, uh, that they gave to, uh, some of the kids that had met them. And it, it was their curling facility's patch and it said that they were three hundred and some years old and that they were old, their slogan is we're older than America. And so, I mean, they've been curling for a long time and they said this is the best facility they've been to.
It's cute.
So, I mean, it's pretty cool to, to hear that, so.
No, I mean, I, I think, yeah, I know we've, we've all talked a lot about, you know, Fire and Ice, but I just, it, it was really amazing. And I, I had an old coworker that just happened to be there with her daughter, um, it's about my son's age, a couple of years younger, on Friday from Shakopee, so neighboring community. And they came back the second night because it was so much fun. And, uh, I mean, this is a lot, you know, and people want to return because the event the night before was, was a blast. And a lot of great conversations in the city booth with, you know, community members that are new to Chaska and longtime residents as well. So, um, just really well done. Uh, I really, I mean, some of, all the things I really want to talk about have been touched on. Oh, I had one other thing and I gotta activate my computer because I've been sitting here so long, I let it go asleep. But their, Curver County Library does their summer reading program. My son's participating in that, so just wanted to highlight that that is still running. And even though it started on June first, it runs to August thirteenth and you can certainly sign up. Um, if you go on their website, you can look it up. But they have a little like, I don't want to call it like a bingo card, but it's like a little, you know, card where you check off the activities and you can turn them in and, and you can get prizes. I don't know if they're giving the raffling for, they are raffling for the Minnesota State Fair tickets again, like twins tickets and stuff. So it's really great, um, prizes for the kids. And I just think anything that keeps the like school engagement there for kids when they kind of acclimate them back in is always a plus. But that's everything on my end of things. Everything else has been talked about, so.
Thank you. Hatfield?
Um, I'm glad I'm not the only council member that gets choked up over cute Chaska things. So thanks for mentioning that. Um, yeah, Fire and Ice is obviously mentioned. Two things I want to call out. Um, one, it was so nice to have a parking map. And I'm so excited for the other hot to go in, but I thought that was really nice touch that they added a parking map so people could kind of see, oh, you know, there's more than the parking lot. I can park other places. Um, I thought that was a nice touch. And I thought it was cool at the, um, Community Center Task Force, some of those people, community members on that task force actually got to come down, be at that booth. I thought that was really cool. I didn't realize that until one stop at the city booth to ask where to go. And I was like, oh, that was a nice touch to get them involved. Um, so I thought that was cool. Um, one other thing on the, um, picnic with police is just that they're also doing stuff a squad there. So school supplies, bring those down. Um, they mentioned some in their Facebook post, otherwise Eastern Curver County School District. Just look up a, a school supply list for them. Um, but yeah, that's always nice. So bring some school supplies with you. And it's always nice, like the police are just like hanging out. You could just like hang out with them and they're just like, you know, real humans and that's nice. So.
You hear that, Kyle? You're a real human.
But we saw Officer Dazan like running through the splash pad.
Yeah, so you could like just see him, you know.
He did say that was a nice way for him to cool off, dude.
Yeah, you could tell. He was, he was pretty happy about it.
Um, and then other than that, I just wanted to call out the, um, on a more serious note, but the suicide hotline changed. So you previously needed to dial, it was like eleven numbers were the full numbers, and now it's just nine eight eight. Um, and that's just something super sad that unfortunately is more and more prevalent. And so just wanted to call that out. If you need it, call it. So that's all I had.
All right. Mr. Nate?
Yeah, Ned?
Elise?
Uh, just a quick thank you to those of you who are at the city booth, uh, for Fire and Ice. And I'll be doing it again for River City Days, so if you have any suggestions, certainly let me know.
Awesome. Thanks. Thanks for organizing that. I think we found out that that's pretty important. I don't think our, we got near the traffic we had hoped at Fire and Ice, at least not my shift. And as I relieved the shift, they kind of said it wasn't, uh, too busy. You did, you definitely had to work that booth. You didn't stand there. You had to work that booth.
It's usually a little different at, at River City Days.
Oh, that's way different.
It's, it's set up more as an information type of booth sitter along there, so.
I think that the booth should have been over by where the, uh, the food and beverage was, I think would have, would have maybe helped that we were.
Could give out beer.
I was gonna say, the mayor just didn't like how aggressively I was telling them to hand those brochures.
Hey, we did. We did.
You better get rid of all these.
Well, we.
I think we should have had a sign that.
He gave a lot of them away.
And then people would come and you could have sold them on it. And then you're gonna come and you're gonna sew them on it.
All right, Jake, you got anything?
Yes, sir.
Matt?
Nope.
Kyle? Just get me out of here.
All right, uh, just a few, a few things that, um, next, our meeting schedule, uh, we have three Mondays in August, uh, August first is a Monday, so, uh, we'll start right there, uh, the twenty-ninth, we're gonna have a work session, uh, could, could still be a council meeting, depending, sometimes, depending with contracts and things like that, whether or not we need to have that meeting, so, uh, but then September, we go into the, uh, September fifth, Monday is Labor Day, so, our schedule goes back to the, back-to-back twelfth and nineteenth again, so, um, just a kinda reminder for us and people watching, um,
we had a work session prior to the, tonight's meeting, uh, was a very good work, work session, we talked about notification of residents with projects, I think we're gonna come out with, I think it's a great plan, but we gotta come, and, and you'll see it as we move forward into the future, um, but I, um, I, I think it's important to talk about it, that, that we did have it, and that things are gonna change on notifications, we, uh, have been kinda hit fairly hard on that in the past year, so. The other thing, uh, please come to River City Days, come to our, uh, city booths, we have a lot of information to share this year, um, we're still working, uh, on talking about our project, about all of the buildings that need, uh, uh, repair additions or new, um, so, uh, please come see us at River City Days, we're also still planning on having, um, kind of a, a picnic in each, each of the four wards, um, in Ward Two is, be Wednesday the tenth at Community Park from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Ward One is Thursday the eleventh at Veterans Park, that's five-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, Ward Three is August sixteenth, that's at Lions Park, five-thirty to seven-thirty, and, uh, Ward Four is August seventeenth at McKnight, but different times, six-thirty to eight-thirty, that's according to the list I have, I hope that it's, uh, correct, so, um, if you didn't get a chance to get, uh, come see us at River City Days or Fire and Ice, that's another opportunity to, uh, come and ask us questions about what's happening and kinda see, uh, why we're doing these things, so.
Well, and one thing to note on that, that is the event that we're gonna have a postcard going out to every resident in town, uh, so every household or every address is gonna get an address saying, you know, you could come to any of these events, but here's one that's sort of specifically guided towards your ward, that your, uh, council ward representative will be at, will have your information, but it'll also say, if you don't have the time, or if that, you know, uh, you know, don't.
The means to get there.
Yeah, if you can't get down there, here's where you can get this information online, so that it's getting something into everybody's hand that can direct them over to, uh, this information.
'Cause we definitely, we, we will start in the budget, uh, the August meetings, we already start budget times already, so.
Yep.
Um, and then, September nineteenth meeting, is that the one we set the preliminary levy?
Yep.
So, it's not far away, uh, seems like, should, should be further away, but it's right here already, so.
Right after that at Stones.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
Don't say that.
Exactly.
We'll find out before.
And then, uh, lastly, just, um, I, the, the Fire and Ice was a, was a great event, and I, I just think that that's, that, talking about building that community and, and all the things, when we built that, those were the, these were the activities that we hoped to see there, and, I mean, I had tons of people, why don't you do this more often, and stuff like that, and I said, well, it's a lot of work and expensive, but, uh, for us to do this one, I think is just tremendous, and it just, it's just gonna keep building on, on that facility, and I see, I went down to the Wednesday concert, had a burning, you know, really nice crowd, still obviously a lot more, but it was hot, and everybody's hiding back in the shade under the trees, so, um, I just think that every time we do something, just gives us an idea to do something more, so it's, it's fun and exciting, um, I, I sent an email out to staff this morning, I think at some point, everyone, every member of staff touches something to do with Fire and Ice, whether you worked at it, or if you're paying a bill, or taking a complaint, uh, however it is, uh, everybody touched it, and I think that we all, we all, uh, that's, I mean, did a heck of a job, and, or they, staff did a heck of a job, Park and Rec and Public Works, I definitely call those guys out, because that, they did a tremendous job, it's a lot of work, and, but they were there the whole time, so, it was awesome. The fireworks, I don't even know what you can say about it, they were tremendous, there was none better, it was, it was pretty cool, and I was sitting watching fireworks, some guy yelled, "We love you, Chaska!" So, there, I'll end it on that.
I would've cried, I would've cried.
You wouldn't?
I'm like, yes!
I won't tell you any of my other stories, so, all right, uh, last call, if not, an entertaining motion to, uh.
One, one thing I just wanna add on, so, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, just put in one plug for, like, the fact that, you know, like, this was a huge success, but a lot of the fact that the curling center in the park exists, that it's in the way it does today, has a testament to the great work and taking them the guts of, of yourself and the council membership preceded us, and, you know, I just wanna give credit to them, because they're the ones who made the hard vote, right, because if you go back in time, it was not an easy vote, right, and a lot of, there was a lot of discussion, and a lot of people were very down on, it's easy to look back now and say, wow, look at how great it is and the turnout, and people coming from all around to be here, because this is the place to be, but that was a really hard vote at the time, so thank you for, to do, thank you for.
I appreciate that, that's.
And thank you to our, our former colleagues, or colleagues who preceded us, because they had a, they had a tough vote to get there too.
Yes, it was, there was a few conversations, those were, we'll let go of that, because, all right, another last call, entertainment, uh, entertainment.
Oh, I make a motion to.
Motion by council member Hatfields.
No.
Hubbard.
I'll second it.
Old mother.
No. I'm not saying it, uh, second by council member Wong, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post stamp sign. Have a good night, we'll see you soon.
But you do, you never get the job, you know?
Yeah.